And maybe we'll get out of here in a bit.
Yes, that will be no problem. We'll do our part.
Thanks everyone for coming on a spring Friday. There's 900 other things we could be doing. We appreciate the time you put in and your efforts and everything you do for the district here. And we'll buzz through this as quickly as we can. Bruce is in Maui.
Of course.
Yeah, well it's been like two days since he went anyplace, I think. So he's in Maui, so we excuse him. And Janice was planning on coming, but the JLC put together a meeting today and she spoke with Superintendent Brothers and I and felt like it would be best if she attended the meeting down at the JLC. So it's just four of us.
Five.
Huh?
Five.
Oh yeah, five of them.
Five of them. Well, I really don't count. A kid from the cornfields. There's five of us.
Bruce does have to come home sometime, get a new set of clothes to go in.
I can't even.
Yeah. So before we turn some time over to Superintendent, let's just buzz through our graduation, high school graduations, one more time. I took a few notes from our last board meeting, but I need to take more notes.
Bring a pencil.
But I need to steal a pen first.
Grab a pen out of that owl.
I had one sitting right by my wallet this morning. And it's booked and it's still sitting there. I heard Jan and John banding back and forth about Roy High. Is this going to be a co-equal?
Yeah.
We're gonna get it. They're not on him.
That'll be fun.
I got a plan.
That'll be fun.
Can you like one word, one word?
Maybe, almost.
You gonna coordinate your outfits?
And that one's Monday morning.
You just show up.
Jan already coordinates her outfits for graduation.
Cause I got a challenge. There's three others that same day that I'll be going to, so I don't know how to swap.
Just wear black.
We have three of them just in our district that day, yeah. Bonneville High School at 1:00 PM. Do you want to take that one?
Sure.
Okay.
I've done the last two or three in a row, but I think Bruce is okay with me doing these. He said he will. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Cause I have a sophomore at Bonneville, so in two years I want to do that beyond for sure.
Okay, perfect. Fremont High will be Monday afternoon at 5:00. Does anybody have anybody tied into Fremont?
I did it last year, they probably don't want to hear from me now.
Okay.
I know Janice wanted to do Weber.
I have Janice down for Weber and I have Janice down for Weber Innovation. She asked for both of those.
Do you want to do that again?
Adult Education.
I can.
The WIC. I think I'd done it last year, didn't I?
Adult Education, you know, where? I think Janice did.
Yeah, I can't. I done Weber Innovation last year.
I usually do.
Is he gonna do Fremont?
I can do. I just didn't know if anybody had a grandchild.
I did the year before that, cause I had Carter.
Yeah.
And I need next year at Westfield, but I'm not here.
Yeah, I feel like.
Do you grant me an ease there?
Yeah. If somebody has a grandchild or a niece, nephew, uncle, aunt, cousin that goes there, I'd just soon let them do it. So we have Adult Education and Two Rivers.
I'll do Two Rivers. That's usually a tape thing.
They always gone to a process where it's more of a walkthrough appointment. It would only be showing up and being a support for the class. I don't think you'd need to speed.
Okay.
We usually go.
Yeah, I think, was it last year or year before, there's several of us there.
It's really a technical ceremony, it's great. They do a great job.
Okay, I think we're good then. I'll check with Bruce and Janice on Fremont, if they don't have any ties there.
Those are on Mondays, right?
Roy, Bonneville and Fremont are Monday.
I'm gonna try to hit them and then I can't make the others.
Okay, Weber, Weber Innovation are Tuesday. Adult Education and Two Rivers are Thursday.
Yeah, I think. Remind me, so is Weber at 9:00 on Tuesday?
Weber is at 9:00 AM.
And then what's, so Roy's at 9:00?
On Monday.
Bonneville, what's Bonneville and Fremont?
They're Monday.
I know, but what time?
Pam will print this back up for us.
I think Roy's at 9:00.
Roy's at 9:00, Bonneville's at 1:00.
A 1:00 and 5:00?
Fremont's at 5:00, all on Monday.
I'll update it and then.
Okay, yes.
And then for Wednesday.
Okay, perfect.
What time is Weber?
And we're at D, right? We're not down on football fields.
Right. No, a couple of.
Oh, but the football field's at 5:00.
That was a lot of fun. I thought we were gonna stay there.
If the will, it'll just be more than a little bit of time.
Somebody invented coats long ago. Okay.
All right, well it's great to see you all. Thanks for a good time today. Before, we've got a couple of presentations that are coming in. First, we'll be talking junior high football and then we'll be talking a little bit about the new elementary and the naming process. Jan's been taking part in that process, but I won't go through all of the detail I provided for you. I just wanted you to have a little bit of takeaway, some talking points, but the reason Janice is down at JLC today is because they're starting, we're starting a pretty deep discussion. We've been in a pretty deep discussion of trying to figure out if we're going to rise up as an educational community against the removal of the earmark. And I've got a definition of what legislature wants to do right now. They want to remove the earmark and as you know, that earmark protects education funding. What we as a JLC did, and Janice and I have been involved in these conversations, JLC, yeah, you don't want to crane your neck, you're welcome, but just, but what JLC decided to do is meet with the leadership of the legislature and lay out these six, these six conditional, if we see some progress in these areas, then we will support the repeal of MFNG. We'll conditionally support it. So right now, so you know, we've been watching the whole legislative session. Are they working to increase funding for public ed beyond just inflation?
No.
No, we only heard that with Stevens.
Are they, we want to see an increased emphasis on local control and flexibility. No, they're doing the exact opposite. Reduction, I'll show you a couple of bills here where, bless you. Reduction in administrative demands, no. There were over 360 bills, right, that were slated for education related purposes. Elimination of unfunded mandates, no. It's a pretty big no to all six of these priorities for the JLC. And so I think you've got within the body, the superintendents and the school board members, the last meeting I was at last Friday, you've got a really strong emotional crew right now that's saying, if they don't respect us, they're not listening to us, we need to, we need to make sure we're gonna stand up and put some pieces together in support of not supporting the repeal in November and getting our educational community riled up and understanding the issues. So we have a meeting today, Janice is attending, and then Monday, again, I'll be attending and I can update you all.
Who's the leader? If you don't mind.
So his name is Kate Douglas in terms of JLC.
No, in case, on the request, yeah. Who's the ring leader?
It's Stuart Adams and it's our guy out here, Mike Schultz, they're all, and Senator Bellner's aboard, every single person.
What about Ryan?
He's on board.
Really?
The leadership has all the key players on board.
It's a weird year because we got known the first of this week by our Wilcox bill.
Yep.
And we thought he was our friend and now it's just a term, so.
Are you talking about physical safety?
Yeah.
No, not ours.
Yeah.
I think they had, we allocate so many funds to get more work and anything else.
He just wants the flexibility to use the most power they want.
Education took a hit.
A friend. That was Jerry Stevens when we met with him at Davis, remember?
Yeah.
The very first word out of his mouth.
Was no.
That's a good joke. In Washington DC.
You're not to do, that's not us.
If you want a friend, get a dog.
So anyway, right now, there's a pretty strong belief within the JLC that we've gotta, we've gotta stand up and fight against the repeal. I shared a letter from.
That was a nice letter.
Yes, the four superintendents across the state put together that we're a part of MFNG getting put in place and they're very passionate about it not coming undone. So I'll keep you updated, but let me just show you.
They're gonna try to do it every year.
I know.
Every year.
I know. What we do know is they've added $50 million to expand the voucher program. So we're up to $93 million.
Up to yesterday. More than doubled it.
They've more than doubled it and we haven't even had a year play out yet to see how that will impact the thing. So of course, we were opposed to that, but that's gone through. The safety amendment bill, Representative Wilcox worried about that one. I think it's gonna go through. That will require in Weber School District, every elementary to have what's called a school guardian, which is an armed employee in the school. And that is the biggest, there's many moving parts to that one, but I just want you to chew on that for a minute. An armed employee in our schools as a guardian of our school that would engage a school shooter or something were to happen. And just as a show of security, you know, trying to show that we've got an armed person in the building.
Not SRO.
No, no. We were worried, we were worried they were gonna require an SRO at first, but they didn't have the funding for it. He wasn't able to get the funding. So anyway.
And do they have to be in the building at all times during school hours?
And we're supposed to, there's supposed to be a smog stipend attached to it. We don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but that's what it equates to. So it's really is somebody who would volunteer for that role and I just don't think guardians are gonna make our schools safer, but that might be a requirement. So we'll revisit that and see when it passes. The DEI bill, I know you know that that already passed. We are still trying to gain clarity around what that means. What I know that it means is we will have to change the name of our educational equity department. The equity department as it stands is still able to function. They still have indicated in the bill, all the language says, we're still wanting to support all children, but we don't like the name, we don't want equity in the title, basically, the public schools. As you know, at the higher ed level, they're having to do away with those offices as part of the bill. So we'll talk a little bit about that later. It also requires that we not engage in certain types of training. We're still trying to gain some clarity on that. Really, it's training around, you know, that one group is dominant over another group. Any type of training that hasn't been of that sort of nature, we've never done training around that, around that sort of, with that method. So anyway, we will be looking at a new name for our educational equity department and what we're leaning towards right now, I'd love your input if you have any, is federal programs and student success department, something like that. We've just gotta take this one out.
Flip that, call it student success and federal programs.
But the problem with that, Gina, can I just bring up what I heard the other day?
Yeah.
That doesn't include our choice, the choice system.
Yeah, it's true. That department doesn't.
But we talked about advocacy, we can't overlook that access as opposed to anything that's student. But maybe, maybe not.
We're looking at all of it, but anyway, we're looking at that. This one's a big one. There's so much to this bill that we're still trying to weigh through. It would completely change our school fees, schedules that we've worked so hard to put in place over the last few years, but it really would basically say that you could not charge a general fee. You can charge extracurricular fees, but nothing related to curriculum in your schools. And then there's a whole lot of other provisions. There is a one-time fiscal note attached to it, but this will put a big burden on districts trying to figure out how to keep certain programs going.
Do you know how much money are fees support?
It's one time though, not.
It's one.
Right, but currently, what, how much?
I have, Robert and Seth are putting a breakdown in on.
We're breaking.
Yeah, I can, we've worked it out by school and I can show you that, yeah.
Lab fees and all kinds of things like that.
Textbook fees going, everything. A lot of our textbooks are online now, but you have to pick up a lot of those things.
But a mandate unfunded.
Unfunded, besides a little bit, we'll get that first year, yeah. This one's a troubling one. It looks like it's gonna go through where teachers can be, certain teachers can be paid extra. And I put right here for you an explanation as to why this is not good for our teachers, to where you create these competitive pay scales for teachers and pay per for performance is just divisive. It's been divisive in every district they've done it in. There's districts all over the nation that have done it. But they're going to invest 200 million, it sounds like, you know, one-time funds to. And really, what they're saying is we want teachers to want to go to the schools that need good teachers. And we also want to recognize our teachers that have high test scores. So, and you know where that goes. Goes to, and we're teaching to test, so we go back to that model.
So is it, is it up to the district to put together the performance credentials?
Yes.
So we have a little control.
We have a little bit of flexibility, but we'll have to put the criteria in place in terms of the quality.
The thing is like, the thing that is so frustrating with all of this, cause like I said, I sit on the PTA's legislative committee as well. And it's like, PTA is opposing this. Like every education group is opposing it, but the legislature just feels like we know best. And teachers in that PTA group were opposing this. They were like, we don't, this won't work in this school. They're like, this will ruin our PLCs, this will ruin teachers collaborating.
It's a can of worms.
And the fiscal note is huge, $200 million.
My wife, I remember the year, she had the worst test scores of her particular group. She worked the hardest and did the best. She had a hard group of kids. So you don't have a universal.
There's so many variables.
Study group like you do on a business or other things. And then the other problem is, how do you evaluate and keep the politics out of the evaluation process?
And then you're gonna like.
It's a can of worms.
Well, and then you're gonna have to, when you're, when you're creating classrooms, like I was talking to a teacher about it, she's like, you're gonna have to look at test scores and create classrooms that are basically trying to be exactly equal.
So don't ever request.
Well, it's child. So you can't.
You can't request any more. This will, there's no more requests.
Yeah.
And I know you can't say that, I'm just saying that that's.
That's kind of what it's showing, cause that's what my friend was saying. She's like, you would have to make every classroom equal when it comes to test scores and that's just a lot of work as well.
It's gonna demoralize our teacher groups. They're already struggling.
There'd be no more equity.
Well, and when you say every classroom.
Oh wait, we can't say that.
Yeah. Anyway, I don't want to spend a lot of time here, cause I want to get to the other pieces, but there's two school board related bills you might have heard a little bit about. They're very problematic. This one, we were on the phone yesterday, Robert and I, trying to advocate it's to its fifth iteration, but basically, these two would stymie local board control and put a cap on our ability to make decisions without things going to maybe a referendum. Or that's this one right here. Shipp's is a little bit that way too, but this one also would have.
Give an example of that, would you Gina?
So I'll tell you, Shipp, I heard Shipp speak to this. He, you remember the school down south that had the Braves mascot? According to Shipp, he's a part of that community, but the school board decided to do away with that mascot. And he didn't feel, and the community didn't feel it was representative of their desires. They wanted to keep the traditional mascot. So there's a group that's come forward to say, we don't like a school board decision. If we get enough signatures, we can referendum that.
With naming of Westfield.
Yeah. So it takes complete local control away.
Isn't that what elections are for?
Thank you. There are elected officials already to represent.
It's in a political nightmare between Shipp and Bramble.
Yeah.
I think the only reason it was written was for Bramble. But I heard it was not gonna pass.
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping not, but.
But again, it's the ninth hour, 9th hour, and we don't know where we're at.
But these would take away local control pieces. This one in particular is problematic because it would undermine our tru- and taxation ratings according to, we were talking to Doug Dale and, yeah, who's our other guy yesterday? I just lost his name.
Ryan Bjork.
Ryan Bjork.
Bjork, Bjorky, like.
Bjorky, award.
And they are really worried about this one, because they've said it would really affect our AAA rating systems and our, you know, our insurance or our interest rates would go sky high. This one is basically the one I told you about. This is a dumb deal as far as I've heard. Now, it's only, it was only here when I put this agenda together on Wednesday, but they're talking about doing away with this amount of taxes, cutting taxes to that extent right there. At a time when public ed, we need more funding for public education. So you can see oppose, oppose. These are all the bills we've really been tracking in terms of evaluating against Amendment This one right here, 86, with Senator Fillmore, this is the one that would cap our ability to use lease revenue bonds over a three-year period. We could not use more than $200 million over a three-year period if we needed to use lease revenue bond.
Is he doing this to, trying to get districts like Alpine to split?
Well, I think they're just, they're feeling like the lease revenue bond pieces that end around to the process and that's what we're hearing.
Wouldn't that be vary by district? Cause the bigger districts are gonna need more money than Tintic.
Yeah.
I don't see the logic.
There is a lot of logic, but again, it's a local, it's a local board issue and they're trying to overreach in my opinion. But those are the ones that we're really tracking as we move down the fast track here to today.
Gina, did you say that it's at 11:00?
Yeah, yeah.
There's seven minutes.
No, tonight, ITM.
Yeah, it's been all day.
2400 hours.
This is, this is. No question.
Well, no, we're. I just.
The Heidi.
Yes. Can we bring that in? I must bring that into our study section on Wednesday next week.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Well, I just.
You can speak to it. So the other thing that goes with this legislative stuff, Kelly and I sit on that policy of procedure thing, and just as a side note, Heidi brought up one day, I would really like to be able to have my title be general counsel slash government liaison or something like that, so that she could be more officially involved with the legislature. Exactly right. In a more official capacity, just as far as being able to question them, as far as being able to ask, you know. And I thought that was a grand idea, cause she represents us so well currently. And she represents other districts. And she represents other districts, but it wouldn't be really a change in position, it would be a change basically in title and maybe a little bit of what she does during the legislative session. So I just want to think about that. I thought that could be a really advantageous thing for us to have someone that. Heidi works directly with bill sponsors. Without having a lobbyist, but still.
Does the school, do you guys have lobbyists?
No, and some districts have, that's.
I don't mean the district, I mean the.
The JLC?
Yes.
Well, the body is the lobbyist that we're talking about. Most districts now are expanding that out, John, and adding some sort of a legislative lobbyist.
But I knew we had.
We did that 20 years ago and it's the best thing I did in the past service.
It's starting to fill that.
We went ahead of the edge pairs and we went ahead of the cops.
I think we're gonna have to do it, we're gonna have to do it moving forward. We just can't be down there every day. Heidi, it would be problematic for about a six-week period, of course, cause we use Heidi a lot, but if we can have her on speed dial.
Well, if we can get through all the policies, she'll help. I have not.
I know.
Except that.
Will you see if Matt is out? Okay, let's do it, let's do it. We got it, yeah. Any other questions? I know I went through that very fast, but I wanted you to know, those are the main bills right now that are in the craw of the JLC as we, as we try to figure out how we're gonna support their other. Talk about me.
I think we had a document, the state of Montana does, the legislature only meets every other year.
Wouldn't that be nice? Do you want a chair or plug in? I'll let you do either.
I'm ready, so let's just plug in.
All right, let's have you sit right here, sir.
Okay.
Welcome you two.
Sure, sit right there, Brock.
We've asked Brock and Matt to come in and kind of update the board on the survey that went out around junior high football.
So you start off with legislation, where I feel like I gotta shower now. And you bring in football.
We're gonna end on a high, John.
You better start sending sugar.
You got all sorts of sugar.
So you're on a high.
You're gonna get extra unnecessary.
I just wanted to give you information about the whole process that we've done. And what I found out through this process is, first of all, we do, we have so many opportunities for kids at the junior high, right? These are all that we offer right now. I say we have 11, because if you count NAL, both boys and girls can participate, same with track, and then we have cheer. So I say we have 11 sports. We, I had Lori pull numbers from last year, and so this column right here is last year's numbers. We had 2,537 kids participate at the junior high. These are this year's numbers, and if you look at football, right, the huge decline, and these are just kids that were on the roster, so that doesn't include, they call them red shirts or gray shirts or brown shirts or whatever they are at different schools. And then of course, we haven't had baseball or track yet, so. So one thing I found out was, we offer a ton of opportunities for kids. No one offers it like we do. They just don't. I talked to Ogden, Ogden offers 11 sports, but they have three junior highs and they're, I was talking to Mr. Moore, it's more of kind of like a, you know, an annual kind of, right? They do, but they do have games and things like that, and then they mix in with the charter schools in the area. So we have a total of, right now, 7688 students in Weber School District. So about 33%, it was 32.7, I think, are participating in activities.
Specifically sports or?
Activities, so just those.
Just those 11, okay, yeah.
Those 11 things. So yeah, that doesn't count choir or plays or drama and things like that, right, which we do. So as you know, we put together a committee, wanted to talk to you a little bit about the committee with members. And I want to start it by saying, I wanted to keep it with the junior high focus, because if we turned it over to the high school, the high schools would take every ninth grader right now into every sport. They would just, and they don't care, they would just disassemble everything we got going and say, yeah, you do everything seventh and eighth, we'll take the ninth graders. So I tried to keep it junior high focus, which to me is even more telling when we come up with the answer that we came up with, right? Because, let's go through this. So Brock, Clyde Brock and I and Lori, Wendy Long, junior high principal, she taught at the junior high, Scott Elliott, pretty much a lifelong junior high guy. Rob Lake coached at South for about 10 years and he's at Roy Junior right now. Jake Traheal is a football coach and teacher at Sandridge. Shane Denne was our high school admin that I asked to participate. Kelly Cooper, the head coach at Walkwest. He also has a ninth grader this year that played up at Walkwest, but he coached, he was the head coach at Walkwest, played up at Fremont, sorry. Tyler King, former junior high teacher and coach, current assistant principal at North. Mike Brown, same, he's at, he's at Walkwest. Miller Atagi, we brought in a parent, he's got three boys, two of whom are, will be in the draft here pretty soon. They played at Weber State, played at Bonneville, played at South, he coached at South, and They played at Weaver State, played at Bonneville, played at South, he coached at South and he sat in on a couple of meetings with us. Likewise, Brian Huer, who played through Weaver School District, that's at Rocky, and then we had an A D, Rick Corbridge. So two high school guys, the rest of them were a big focus of junior high. So I met with all the junior high coaches, I think I've told you that before. Three of them have already separated and taken jobs somewhere else. They, they are always looking, this is what we run into every year. So the, the two out North, go ahead.
Doug, you're gonna say it, go ahead.
Yeah, the two out North have separated, Jared Snell and Deshaun Butler. And then Greg Everhart from South is gone to Box Elder.
Where's Deshaun?
Deshaun's at St. Joe's.
Doug Brown has to coach at Westfield.
Yeah, so Doug Brown is the sophomore coach at, at Westfield. Jay Traheal's already in talks with Roy High to coach at Roy. And then Dustin keeps throwing his names into everything, so every job that was open.
So we may not have any junior high football coaches next year.
Yeah, well, and part of this, that's, part of our problem is, the three that we, I tell you that have taken jobs over. We, we always have so much turnover there. That's part of my fear. When I interviewed these guys and I just talked to them about how things were going. And, and every one of them said, we should keep it, it's great. They also, you talk to the, the four that are kind of established, they have a hard time playing against the Orion and North Ogdens because their, their starters play, play for a quarter and then they play everybody else, which is okay, but it's not real competitive. And then as I talked to the, these three, they weren't sure about the safety regulations about if they had to even recondition helmets, things like that. So it scared me to death. I had one guy tell me that I do it myself, right? So he, you know, tightens the, the face masks and replaces things and.
Liability.
Right, right. So when we got to our three main concerns, it was more than just what is glaring about the talent differential and things, right? Participation, cost and safety is what, as we first met as a committee. And the reason that I even asked for permission last year to talk about this is because we've seen a decline in participation. Costs continue to go up. With Mountain View coming, here's a time, are we gonna spend seventy-five thousand dollars on brand new stuff? And then maybe in two years get rid of junior high football, right? And then safety. So those were our three main concerns. We sent out the committee, I mean, we sent out the survey with the survey. These are, this is what went as the first page of the, the survey so that they would have some background of why we were sending this out. I'm not sure if everybody read it, but we wanted to explain to them why we were even sent in on the survey. And this is the information that we wanted everybody to have. Questions about that? Do you want me to spend some time on that, Gina?
Up to the board, they have any.
Do you have any questions so far?
Cause you went through it with us a little bit before.
Yeah.
If this is.
That's exactly what that is. It's the same stuff. The first one there that says two hundred and seventy students participated. Our initial numbers, and that included everybody, managers, we had two hundred and sixty-eight, which is why it's different than two hundred and eight. That included managers, red shirts that don't play. So when we had the two oh eight, we just counted kids on the, on the roster that played football.
And last year you had three hundred and.
Three forty-seven.
Three forty-seven, I hit that second bullet point.
And this year was two hundred and eight?
Yeah.
The second bullet point under participation where you're just a.
Oh, yeah, so just, just a reminder of, for the last six years, we had to combine two of the junior highs. Now, we already combined Snowgrass with the two up North, they, they go to Orion. But four of the last six years, Orion and North had combined together because they couldn't make a team. And then this last year, South and Bell had to combine because Bell had twelve and South had twenty-three. So.
What do you see as the main reason?
I think there's lots of reasons, though. I think opportunity, there's lots of opportunity. Other, other opportunities, a lot of people believe that to keep them in the rec and then let them go as ninth graders.
That's the pattern I started to see when I was in that role, that was mainly out North and Orion.
Yeah.
They was playing rec and then when it became eighth grade, they went straight to the high school.
Because they just play more.
They're getting more games and more attention.
Yeah, it gets longer, and more they gained, I think, is more practice reps, right? Because the season's a little bit longer, so they can practice longer and develop.
More teams.
Yeah.
There's, there's always been the notion, at least in my area, that the rec program is a better program.
Right, right, that's what I was hearing.
And so they like, like to keep their kids in rec through eighth grade and then in ninth grade they play at the high school. So the kids who have played since they were eight years old don't ever play at the junior high. The junior high, at least at Orion, is full of kids who have almost never played football before.
They're first timers, right? So, except they had a couple of kids that weren't able, lost the opportunity to play at Weaver High.
Or decided not to, yeah, there was a few.
Yeah, they lost the opportunity. So they got to, so they had a decent.
They won two things.
Yeah, they had a decent year, so.
First time on your career.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
That's a big part of it.
Matt, will you touch on three on cost? How often do you change those?
So helmets have a ten-year lifespan on it, but you have to recondition them every other year, every helmet does. And so.
Is there reconditioning cost there?
Yeah, absolutely. They're twenty-five bucks a, a helmet.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Every time, right?
Twenty-five, Matt?
What's that?
Twenty-five with helmets.
Twenty-five is what it starts at, yeah. So if you send in, you know, thirty, forty helmets every year. And, and most coaches that know about this have a rotation, right? And they'll put new helmets in, they'll rotate, they'll keep the ones that have four or five years and do the reconditioning and then they get rid of some, right? The, some of the other coaches have no idea that.
That's why you're saying you concerned. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So it's just the liability waiting to.
Absolutely.
And, and helmet. I'm gonna call that guy doing.
You could spend eight hundred dollars on a helmet, you guys, right? That's where they're at now. Some, some parents do.
She's doing rugby and we don't have to do helmet.
Yeah, that's right. Go back to the level.
There's a liability of rugby.
So. Um, any, any other bullet points or questions you, this is kind of the, the whole reason why we're looking into junior high football, right?
Give me the meat and potatoes.
That's it, right there, my friend.
No, you, you not giving any direction yet.
Well, you're gonna get it in a second.
That's what I'm looking for.
So here's a, here's a survey question. You're not gonna get it from the survey, I'll just tell you that, so.
Oh, there's no way?
Yeah.
Fifty-fifty, right?
Yeah, that's right. So here's a question, does, are we meeting the mission statement that says to prepare our kids for high school athletics? That's what our mission statement in junior high is. And we've been very focused on that with our junior high board of managers, coaches, even cheer, everything. We've been focused on, does this help our high school programs? Because that's what we're trying to do. And I'll, I'll show you.
We're also, of course, trying to help each kid develop their skills and sportsmanship and all of those.
Possessable, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let, let's just skip down to with decreasing numbers of participants and subsequently fewer games in our fall season, should junior high football continue?
Well, you believe that.
One, one person different, right?
No, it's more than a dance, Eric.
Yeah, so, and, and we had sixteen hundred participate, sixteen twenty-three participate in the survey, which was good.
Can I just say one thing?
Please.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not, neither here nor there, but it sort of is. Nowhere in there is where the people that pay for this program surveyed, taxpayer.
Right.
I mean, they were in the parents.
Sure.
Well, go back one more, too.
Yeah.
But we represent that crew.
So you had four hundred and fifty-seven students, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't mean to discount students, but.
Sure.
I feel like they're always like, sometimes kids just do surveys and.
Well, they're gonna come and go in three years.
It's a large amount of students.
In our committee and, and they said, well, the kids that don't care about football didn't take the survey.
Of course they did.
Right? They just didn't. They looked at it and said, or, or even the parents for the most part. So they said, these numbers are, are skewed, but it's, so that makes it even more favorable that it was at least fifty-fifty.
Well, I think it would skew it big time if you surveyed the public who pays for it.
Yeah, you bet.
It would skew it a different way.
You bet. So based on financial, right, do you continue to support junior high football program? So that was fifty-one, forty-nine. That was the most decisive we have, seven eighty-seven to seven fifty-eight. Next one, due to safety concerns, do you continue to support, should we facilitate that? Seven sixty-nine to seven seventy-six, right, just straight across there. And then this one's interesting, if junior high football were to be replaced, we only gave them three options, soccer, golf and volleyball. And that's, that's what they, that was their opinion. So we don't have any idea where we would go if that's the decision made. But I, I'm not sure that boys soccer is the place to go right now, right?
I don't think it's so much availability.
Yeah.
I don't think you would have much participation in soccer.
If, if, yeah, if those three things are our reason, they're still gonna be there with boys soccer, right? It's the highest number of red cards and ejections in, in any sport we do.
Any kid who's currently playing youth soccer at a competitive level, they're gonna keep playing with their club. Again, like John, John said, you're gonna get the first time soccer players. You're gonna get the A Y, the rec kids.
Can I ask a question?
The boys volleyball to me makes the most sense.
A parent's point of view.
Yeah.
If you did, if one went away, the number of children that are selected to be on a football team versus the number of children that are selected for a volleyball, soccer or golf team. Isn't there a pretty significant discrepancy in the size of the teams?
Yeah, you bring up all that important.
As far as participation, is there?
How many girls volleyball players do we have?
So let's go back to this thing real fast, you guys. So if you look at, at football, two hundred and eight.
We've got a hundred and ninety volleyball players.
Yeah, you bet. So, so look at the numbers in this year, so NAL number one at two thirty-five, right? Then number two is boys basketball. And then girls' basketball last year killed, you know, had so much more than, than football. And that's about twenty-one kids, well, it's a little more than that per school.
Well, it is for street volleyball, so.
Right?
On fo- on football, if you graph that, would it be a linear trend?
I think Clyde could speak to that. These are just the two years I've been a part of it.
The numbers were down when I was in Matt's role, but the people that was coming at me, and Matt mentioned this earlier, was high school people. And I didn't, I didn't weigh that because I knew, you know, the high school person that would want eighth graders and all that stuff. So, but the numbers has been on a decline for several years.
Yeah, Doug, when I was coaching football, I was the head coach at Bonneville, at Bonneville for five years, coached there for fifteen. This discussion came up back then, I don't know if you guys remember that, but they were talking about getting rid, rid of junior high football. And there was a small discussion and the high school said, absolutely, give us the ninth graders. Because Cash Valley, they have ninth graders that play, right? If you talk to people that around the state, they would say that the programs that do math are the ones that have four years, right?
But just an opportunity.
Four years at the high school, right?
Opportunity for kids to.
Yeah.
When did we go to nine finish playing up though?
A four-year look as opposed to a three-year. I guess we have to have four years to go.
See, so there's some numbers that are saying, and you still got A Ds and coaches that are saying, we don't, we still can't. So that process actually kind of said, we did it and you're still not happy.
Right, right, actually. And that's why that's a different discussion with the high school.
I agree.
I'm there, I've been there. They, it, it would have skewed everything we did if we would have just put a ton of high school people on this committee.
But if you also remember, part of that discussion, and you correct me if I'm wrong, was one from each school.
Right, it started that way.
It's gone way past that now. Didn't you hear it all the time? It's like, I just washed my hands and say, do what you gotta do because we're still here complaining.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
When I was coaching, it used to be that you could only play up at the high school if they started varsity.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, so that's what it was.
That's what the decision was then.
And then it gradually loosened up a little bit more, right?
So my only, I, I was talking with, I was at a boys' basketball game, I was talking to Scott Elliott and Skyler?
Skyler.
Kimball? Yeah. Yeah, so my only thought is, in a lot of maybe, you know, more the, the Roy communities or, not even that. So I think one thing that keeps parents from wanting their kid, like, we're talking seventh and eighth graders, right? So we're gonna assume the ninth graders can just play in high school. So seventh and eighth graders, I think one plus for why parents like junior high football is because the rec program is really time consuming. Like for most parents whose kids play rec football, their whole month of August, they don't go on vacation, their kids are practicing six nights a week.
And it's more expensive too.
It's actually, I was talking to the.
Not that much.
It's not that much.
They don't have to buy their own uniforms?
No, I talked to the director at North Ogden, called me several months ago and she was telling me the price for a season and it's.
Not much more.
No, it's almost the same.
Yeah.
So the price isn't the same, but I just think there's a lot of parents who are like, we don't, we're not interested in, in selling our whole family to, you know, like shutting our whole family down for football. So I think the junior high gives some families the opportunity to play football with a little bit less commitment. So I think that's the only, so I see that as some drawback.
Yeah.
But I, I personally am in favor of take, of getting rid of junior high football. But I think as a responsible, like.
Representative.
Representatives, then we need to maybe allow the city rec leagues to, I don't know, like bring that information into parents who maybe don't know about it. And say, hey, we're, this is not that much more, it's the same price, here's how to sign up. I don't know, like give that transition, which like I said, I do think you might lose some kids who maybe more early would have played junior high football that are interested in commitment to rec. But I guess that's just aside.
No, I, I agree one hundred percent.
Because some people might not know about, if they didn't start their kid at age eight.
Yeah.
Um, they might know, not know the ins and outs of rec, rec football.
I think we would do all the above.
And I think the rec programs are allowed to, to take all of these kids.
Absolutely. I've talked to many of them, not all of them.
Yeah.
And they said, just let us know so we can start prepping for it.
And then my only other comment were, um, volleyball to me makes the most sense. And I know it would take a couple of years to bring those numbers up to like what girl volleyball numbers are, just because I know volleyball with boys is like.
Yeah.
But maybe not.
So my, my brother's coaching volleyball at Roy High, he had fifty-one kids try out.
Yeah, that's great, that's a lot.
I think that's a great.
This is try out, so.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, and Brock can probably talk to.
But golf, I think, doesn't, they're not enough kids that are gonna play golf here.
You bet.
Isn't there a completely different skill setting called football?
Speedy.
Well, that's a, a different athlete taught together.
Yeah, and kids can learn volleyball pretty easy.
Yeah.
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 So just some interesting things from the, from the survey.
Oh, I have, Davis does wrestling, right?
Yeah, so does, so does Ogden. They like it. So there were five hundred and ninety-three comments, I haven't read through all of them. There, there's some good comments, but you can tell some are kids and so eighteen people mentioned lacrosse. Wrestling was mentioned twelve times, eighty instances of the word soccer. So just, just kind of a heads up there for you. And then we met last Friday and this is the meat and potatoes, John.
Yeah, here we go.
And we met with the junior high football committee and discussed the survey, we talked about everything else pertinent to it. And we voted unanimously to propose to you guys that.
From the big committee you chose?
Yeah.
Unanimous?
Unanimous, with the junior high coaches, with.
That's interesting, cause Doug Brown's wife sent us emails.
Before he got the job at Westfield.
Oh, imagine that. So you see how this is driven. This is kind of like the frigging hill down the solace that everybody's talking about, right here, you know what I mean? It's whatever works best for me, cause if you talk to Rob Cuff, not Clough, I called him cuff and Clough and he almost cuffed me. Last Monday, on the hill, I was down there, I seen Rob there, it was, it was the, the school day. There is nobody on the northern end of the state that's even qualifying to go any higher than the high school football. That's the sad part, but parents, including my own daughter, can't see that, can't see the trees for the forest. And so they're very adamant that this program works and that they get every opportunity they get. One, realistically speaking, you know, when I go watch the downhill tomorrow night, it, it's a rare instance that we have that coming out of this way, so. As you talk to people and try to massage that and really bring it out on costs, safety issues, playing, put them where you can if you have a choice, but.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a wise choice and when you look at that unanimous, so when would that happen? Let me throw that out there.
That's what I was just gonna say, I think, I think a question that we need to answer is, okay, we're discontinuing junior high football, how are we gonna do it? It's on life, it's on life support now, do we pull the plug or do we let it die a slow death for a couple of years?
You gotta buy all the stuff from the new junior high.
We already got that budget, don't we?
Could I add to that, sir?
But, yeah.
Don't we got that budget?
And, and, but I had a question about that. If, if we don't have, now this, this is just a question and it might be the dumbest one comes up all day. If, if we don't have many participants in junior high football right now, with the exception of some of the items. Can we transfer some things over from junior highs to the new junior high? Get the helmets repainted?
Give them the tenured helmets that are out.
Or, or is that, is that, is that a dumb thing?
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, possibly.
The other part is, if, if it's on life support and we, we want an exit strategy, we wanna know what we're going to perhaps replace it with and be prepared to do that. What if, I think, and, and this is just something I've grappled with, what if the ninth graders, there was a hybrid decision made for right now. Ninth graders go up and play, seventh and eighth graders, we go one more year. And I'm gonna tell you, it'll take care of, I, I just believe that the numbers will be one way or another.
It'll damage your business.
But, yeah.
It showed the stuff we did four years ago.
Mountain View would be the issue, Mountain View would be the issue.
Well, and we discussed this in the committee and all the junior high people said, the coaches said, well, that's what we're doing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna coach.
Because, because they don't only give me a year.
Yeah. They'll know it's going that direction anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that would be the only option as a hybrid, but it's slower now.
If we need to hire, if we're losing all of our junior high coaches to say we're gonna hire you for one year.
That's difficult.
Then we do its best to pull the plug, saves us seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right.
That would be.
Ballpark.
And that's, that's sort of. And that's, that's sort of there, that's the, that's not even.
But the other challenge is gonna be, is you're not giving us enough time, and I'm going on the, on the opposite side, of letting us get rid of our kids, or changing our, going home and telling our kids it's gonna be gone, you didn't give us an option, it just dropped. I kind of like where you're going, Soup, on just, as, as, as painful as it's gonna be, if we've got the money budgeted, if we already got the issues happening, we're moving forward with next year. Is follow that hybrid, or that process, take the ninth graders up, they know as soon as they can, try to do the best they can. Cause I think it's gonna do the same thing that happened four years ago, Roy High graduate, four years ago, and it'll remain itself, just like you said. And, and the program will go away, the challenge is, what are you doing on coaches, and I don't know if we can tap into some of our, um.
Rec, maybe?
Rec guys, the Plin's, I was gonna say, and I know he's not in it no more, cause he's backed down, but, you know what I mean, if we can tap those and say, can you just work with your community and make it right?
So if we tell them that ninth graders going up, do we have to transfer them over then?
No, we would do that, I, I'm just gonna speak to that, because we don't do that with our other people, we don't do that with our other sports, we really don't.
That's a liability. We make parents.
We don't make them go play.
Other districts doesn't bust them either, man, Davis is not busting that bridge to high school to get them to home.
It's, it's still.
So there's nothing that tells us to do that, liability wise, if you're being, if you're gonna play up at the high school.
Sign the paper or something.
So the question is, cause we talked about this in there, and they said, so what happens when a ninth grader says, I'm not playing at Fremont, I'm staying at Walquash if I'm playing?
That didn't come up.
Right?
And I, I think we'd have to draw that line.
Let me say, sorry.
Why would they stay? Tell me, explain to me why they would stay, cause I'm going two ways on that, Matt, why?
To be the, the big fish in the little pond.
Okay, I understand that part, okay.
And transportation, maybe they don't have.
That parent could get rid of there.
Can get over there, right, which, if you look at it from the high school, that's part of the problem anyway, right?
Sure it is.
It always is, but um, for this discussion, that's.
And John, maybe that's a discussion for the board to have, in terms of if we're, we're stopping the cost around the junior high football eventually. Maybe the transportation piece for ninth graders going out, could we look at going forward, I don't know what that would entail, but I know other districts don't do it.
So if we're gonna bust every day, we don't wanna go to the high school and participate?
Yeah.
I'm okay saying about the other sports.
Right.
Cheers.
We're not, we're not, the party says we can find legal, we don't have to, and we put it back on the parent responsibility, then it's not between us and them, it's between the student or their kid and their parents on how they get there.
That's what we've been doing some.
Do we have any information about how many young men are interested in playing football at Mountain View?
You would assume.
We hate to buy the equipment and then have twenty kids try out.
I, I'm, why can't we do your suggestion? Member of the community there, I don't think of all of your junior highs, that Mountain View is going to be short on kids that would wanna play in comparison to others, just knowing what I know about the community.
Yeah.
But then you're gonna have a smaller team anyways, cause you're pulling kids from Walquash, you're pulling kids from, so, so those, those, yeah.
Right.
That's true.
That, that would be my assumption, they both have less than forty.
Cause Rocky and Mountain View will now have smaller teams, because you're using the same kids.
Yeah.
That's true.
They both have, will we end up combining Mountain View and Rocky?
That's, yeah.
Right.
And then we wouldn't need to buy all the equipment.
Right.
Could we leave that one?
And then, but then we have, it's, see, part of, part of the issue, we're gonna be forced, right now, is.
And your transport. It's a practice.
We're looking at five games, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Five weeks, five weeks.
Yeah.
Right, so, but that's the other thing, we're looking, you bet, and, and you play rec, you get eight at least.
It's a little work for a month and a half.
Can you just tell them that Rocky and Mountain View are combined?
What if you just went, what if you left them where they were at? I know that might be a turf battle, but it's not a high school, it's a junior high, so you simply said, you can go to Westfield for, for your, during the day, but if you wanna play football, because there's gonna be numbers are small. If you're Rocky, you stay there, if you're Walquash, you stay there. I don't know if that's even an option, I'm just trying to say.
Yeah.
I just think conditioning at the high schools are starting now, like, kid, they're already, like, eighth and ninth graders are already conditioning at the high school. I just say if we made this, my opinion is to just get rid of it next year, and then if it's a March decision, those kids who are on the fence can now start conditioning. It's not too late to start conditioning at the high school.
Brock, you've been off the quiet this whole time.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I find it difficult to tell a coach they've got one year, when a half of them have already left.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to find someone who will do that.
They'll have one, but, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I don't know how that's fair for students, and if you take all the ninth graders up, are you gonna be able to have, have enough numbers out of just your seventh and eighth graders?
Yeah, small teams.
Because a lot of the seventh and eighth graders in some of our communities are playing rec now, and to think that they're gonna come back to the schools, I think.
Junior high tells them, says seventh graders to play in the rec.
And we do have rec programs that we've talked to that have approached us, and we're ready to go.
What about backlash? I'm just gonna, one more time, and then I'll drop it, are we gonna get backlash from parents?
Yes.
Well, so, so I'm talking to him, he says, you didn't give me enough time to decide.
Right, but the survey says, there's only fifty percent of them, and, and then you start narrowing that down, there's gonna be six.
I also think that this rumor has, the rumor about football has been circulating for the past nine months.
For long enough.
Well, but I mean, even in this, I think, cause you know, I was having people ask me about it last August, and so those kids that played football last year knew that it was coming. So I just don't think that you'll find very many parents that are just absolutely shocked, cause those coaches were talking to their kids about it, anyway, sorry.
What I'd be curious. What is, no, I don't think, Paul, does, uh, what I'd be curious about is, out of those two hundred and eight, how many of those are ninth graders? Because they don't factor into the situation anyway, cause they're already, yeah, I think so.
They don't.
Um, and then of the eighth graders, out of that two hundred and eight, how many of them are already planning to go to the high school? So you're, you're probably looking at a small sliver, and then the sixth graders who have never had that opportunity aren't gonna know any different.
That's right.
And I think we're, I think our sample size is pretty small.
Just the two they went out, we, they're crickets, I don't know about the board members.
I haven't, I haven't either.
I haven't either, and, and so I'm okay on taking, I'm good, I will support on discontinuing, I'm just saying, we serve constituents, who's going to unload on us, I just feel like that's coming, with them saying, so if we can take the heat, which I can for a couple of months, the issue would be, it's very easy to explain, we have no coaches for your kids, we coach, right? Well, I'll come and volunteer, if you're gonna get them coming out of the woodwork, well, you say something, I'll volunteer, I was a young man's president, I was this, uh, this, uh, counselor when he was in juvenile, deep, no, you know what I mean?
Kelly spoke to it a little, can, can we do a little bit more of, you know, allowing the, the communities to do a more robust recruitment in our schools?
Absolutely.
When that goes away, that's, that's an opportunity for us to engage community wise.
I think they can voice, yeah.
I, I think you're, you're a diehard football kids and parents, as already at the high school.
It's already done.
I agree, I agree.
I really do.
Or, because of rec, because of what, where we at right now with junior high football.
Because they.
They're in the strongest program.
Yeah, they're in the UCL, yeah, so they're gonna go to the high school.
But I just think we need to give that information to those other kids who did, those seventh and eighth graders who could do rec, and whose parents might not know anything about it.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we ought to give the rec a heads up that it's coming.
That, and they all aware.
They're all aware, cause they're gonna withdraw, and I'm, like I said, I'm good, I really am, we've talked about this when you were in.
And you might not absorb any, but.
But I'd like to give them the opportunity to really speak to it too, cause we haven't done that because we didn't want to be in competition.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But if that goes away, then.
The other nice thing is, we cannot, I mean, we offer so many sports.
Yeah.
Like, especially with track, the thing I love about junior high track, I mean, look, you had eight hundred kids, we have so many kids that participate in junior high track, so it's like,
The rec that goes to me.
Yeah, a lot.
Kids who maybe aren't gonna continue playing football, there's a place for them in track, I mean, I've been to many junior high track meets, it's a great
Do we need to turn on hope right now?
opportunity for any kid at the junior high to participate.
Yeah, I was actually gonna speak to that, then you know, for potential replacements, coming from the high school, golf is incredibly expensive, cause you gotta do green fees, right?
Right.
Did I hear that? We pay, we will pay, yeah, there's, yeah, so.
The schools pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I liked it one on our, on our ledger, and I think we got half our pin, this amount of money to a golf course, and then he said, oh, it's green.
It's really expensive.
Yeah.
Great fee.
Yeah. Soccer is already sanctioned by U H S A, and then just, you know, Kelly's point, I don't think kids are gonna leave their club programs for that. Um, wrestling, I don't know enough about wrestling to speak to it, but as the principal of Bonneville, we had incredibly low numbers, right?
And it's, it's a cost of, by and all the wrestling, right?
Sure, um, just speaking of volleyball, because I played in high school, I played at the collegiate level, I coached for years. It's an easy transition, because we have all the equipment, you're looking at jerseys, really, and coaches, right? Um, we were a little nervous as we were still, a few years back in high school, bringing it into, what would the, the numbers look like? To hear fifty plus at Roy, is pretty incredible.
Especially now when it started at Weber, remember?
Yeah, and Weber has the numbers.
The Weber boys.
Well, and I think if.
Because they do do it without an experience.
If it's a brand new sport too, I just think like our P E teachers of junior high level can take some time to teach the kids in the P E class, like,
Kids.
And, and it's, it's so, so new, there aren't, it's not, um, saturated with clubs here.
How to play and let any kid try out. Less threatening, yeah.
So kids getting into it, it's gonna be new and fresh to them, I think the junior highs are a natural trend.
Like he writes, like, oh, softers and I think of the clubs.
Yeah, no, yeah, and like you said, with red cards and soft.
Some offers, did you say just offer?
I, I think that to me makes the most sense, I don't know enough about wrestling to say that that's not a better option.
The last thing we need is to get involved in boys softball.
There's, there's a little bit of a rec figure, Roy, isn't there, um?
Of what?
Of wrestling.
Oh, yes.
There's one in Weber.
But small. Each of our schools have kind of a small affiliate, that they try and go through?
Yeah, I don't have many, it is.
Yeah, Fremont has one, Weber has one, Bonneville has a small one, Roy has a small one, but, and, and I think, I think it'd be difficult to do if, if we make the decision that it's, junior high football goes away, I think we need to take a year to ask people what we do. Cause to me, with the newness of, of boys volleyball, that makes most sense, right? As, as we're trying to implement that, I don't think we could do it a service this fall coming out.
Oh, and, and it's okay, Matt, if we don't have a little bit of title.
I talked to Heidi, Title Nine, yeah, and right now, we're, um, there's a little more girls participation in this area right here, last year. Then there are boys, and I'm just, I, I just split track down the middle, right? But, um, and that's what she said, I asked her, well, we have to replace it, she said, well, it depends on what our numbers are at.
I think we have more boys than track and girls.
Yeah, so I would assume.
But you can say that you're without it being a legal issue, is what I'm assuming. I think it will work towards it, re, refiguring, but we'll find out more about that.
Yeah, yeah, you bet. Right, I was cautious not to get the cart before the horse, because I don't, people think that I don't like football, you know, and here I am, a football guy that played football in college, that coached football, that did all these things, and they think I hate football, and I am also, got a lot of common sense in my head, and for me, common sense wise, I don't know why we continue to do this.
Who, who taught, who told you that you have common sense in your head?
My mom did.
Could we, with, if, if we took it, could we have the junior highs start doing maybe like a week of clinics for volleyball, or intermu- like, inspirational to start,
What a nice gal, yeah.
She was a sweetheart.
Can they take some intermurals now?
To start introducing volleyball?
That, that's what I was just gonna ask, so if we can.
Intermural.
With, or stake in this heart.
Yeah, like clinics with intermurals?
Your, your group says, let's discontinue, what's your, uh, direction for us to how is going to discontinue?
That, that's a great question, I think we just discontinue, and I think we.
Just plug tonight.
Yeah. Sort of, um, yeah, as, as soon as we can.
I think we have to get some of the messaging out of it, and just like.
Yeah, and, right, yeah, but, and, and so.
Otherwise, if I, uniforms from one year.
Everything can disappear.
Right, right, and, and I would tell Matt, you know, like I said, I was hearing, I'll get the question, how are you gonna do?
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I do.
But we wasn't in this situation where we gotta go invest in the new junior high school uniform, so it was kinda okay to kinda keep teetering along, cause it really wasn't costing us more money.
No.
It's letting, die a slow death.
But now you're in a situation where you gotta make a decision, are we gonna invest in a new program, or is the old, the program is dying, or what do we do, so?
And I do think it's a good point to be made, that we're adding another junior high, which is just gonna delete the numbers, it's gonna make those, like Walquash, Mountain View and Rocky even smaller.
So can we? Can we, for this year, this coming school year, can we just send the boys at, at Mountain View to Rocky to play?
Versus not doing away with it, perhaps?
Or, or, or are we just going to say, no football?
Are we going all of them?
I'd say, I'd say, I have, I know that, we can make a hybrid work, but I, like, the, I don't think we can get the coaches the more.
No, we can't make it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I think that's our problem. Hey, can I just throw one more thing in?
Can I say something, Matt, before you do? If you, this is what kinda woke me up, when I was in Matt's role, we had COVID, and we couldn't use the field, we couldn't practice at the junior highs and stuff, it caused a drought and all that stuff. And so I did a little survey with our coaches, and said, hey, what day would you prefer to play, and I thought we could play Saturday the mornings. And all, ninety-nine percent of our coaches said, if, if you wanna play on Saturday the mornings, I'm not coaching, because I'm gonna be at rec.
They're coaching, they're doing.
Yeah, and so we had to look, I think we did it on Thursday, man, you was at the high school, I think we played on Thursday, at, use the high school field, cause our field at the junior high was a drought going on, and they didn't want us on the grass and stuff like that, but that was a hour, and I'm thinking, thought you love junior high football, but they were telling me, if you do it on Saturday, you need to find somebody.
I love it if it's between here and there.
Yeah, right, so.
And so we, we've got a few things to work on, basically, all the direction.
I had a thought, Paul, of how we, because like I said, I didn't wanna get the cart before the horse, it's true anyway, but I think we can all brainstorm about how um, we move forward with it, get the word out as soon as we can, so that we can be respectful of kids that wanna make that decision of where they go to rec or, or high school, there's even ninth grade rec programs, if they don't wanna go to the high school.
That's right.
And there's kids that can play four, but lighter.
That's correct, yeah, so, so we'll have you make this presentation in board meeting Wednesday night.
Do we have to make a board decision to drop it?
Yeah, we, you have to vote, cause it's a program that has taxpayer money behind it, I checked on that for sure, they, Heidi recommended it.
So what are you thinking, March?
Yeah, I think you have to, just so that you give those kids, cause like I said, these high schools are already doing conditioning for eighth and.
But high school ain't gonna get affected.
No, but the kids who maybe thought we're gonna come down.
Cause they're already doing, and those kids that are already working there, are already there, so, but I think we should do it March, I think we should get it out, and if we can get the rec guys to be made aware that they're gonna have maybe a small change, it may not even affect them, but that's not my concern.
Well, they might, they might want to have a big change.
Yeah.
You know, what I'm saying is.
Is bringing the big baton, you're thinking?
Well, let them grow their program, where we haven't in the past, because it's being competitive.
Yeah. That's what Travis wanted to do.
Yeah, that, that gives them some time to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
We'd let them come into the schools, we'd let them have the.
Absolutely.
I see, that's the other thing, is if they want to condition, we have an agreement, that if it's an eighth or seventh or eighth, they should be able to still come to our schools.
Yeah.
And lift, and condition wherever you go.
Well, and they use our fields, they use our junior highs already, they, they use our high schools.
Sure, sure.
But they could use it more, possibly.
Yeah, absolutely.
On Thursdays, not Fridays.
Yep.
At, after school time.
Junior high, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
You guys have done a lot of work, thank you very much.
This is all my, good job.
Calling for, for monks now, the people in our heart area, said we've already made that decision. Calling for, for monks now, the people in our heart area, said we've already made that decision.
They, they, no, we have, yeah.
That's true too.
And.
I think that's already it done.
And they seem okay resigning to it. They haven't had anybody protest.
Cost you in the grocery store.
Front lawn or toilet paper house or anything, so I think.
All right.
I thought you took too much of your time.
Hey, we've got two more pieces, but I want you to have a break. Why don't we come back at quarter till instead of playing.
Good presentation.
You've got a minute and twenty-seven seconds.
Yeah, so I've asked, I've asked Mary Jo and Justin Skene to come in. They've been involved as, as has Jan with the naming committee for the elementary. And I just wanted to update you, we would like to bring a proposal, a few proposals to the board with the recommendation on Wednesday night to get that down. Um, so I could turn the time to these two. Welcome to.
Thank you.
I'm just, Justin, you've been doing a phenomenal job since I've been talking to him. You're on the process, you've gone through.
Very big, thanks, Mary Jo. And obviously if there's questions, you're open to add any more to the discussion, let me know. But we started first of all, obviously with looking at the policy, making sure we follow what's in our curriculum right now, and getting a team together committee of people who are going, who are gonna serve on that committee to help, um, come up with names to present to the board. The committee consists of parents from Canesville, Hooper, Country View. There's one more in Canesville, there's three in Canesville, and two in the other two, and the reason for one more in Canesville is because there are more students coming from Canesville, so it makes sense that there's one more person on it. In addition to the seven parents, we also, um, felt like we should put a city representative in there, that's out there and binding the board, um, um, also as well. Yep. And so we do have our record, a gentleman from the recreation department there, and he's been on it. Um, and he's done a nice job, and we also included a classified employee and a certified employee. The certified employee started a little later in the process because of, I don't know, hiring certified employees, and someone who was hired by instructional coach, she joined the process as well. And so as we established the committee, and in addition to the committee, those committee members, we've certainly, of course, had four member, Jen Burrell has been involved in the process the whole way, and, and also, um, our facilities department, as well as Kurt Swalberger, assistant director in elementary, has been involved, and of course, Mary Jo has chaired that, and has been overseeing the process, so. That's the committee in, in a nutshell. And from there, the committee got together and we sent out an email to, two emails to the, the community. We wanna make sure the process involved multiple stakeholders, and that gave them a chance to give input and insight on the Aman mascot. Um, that came through a Google form. We also posted on our website, our website right now is titled New Elementary, so we're gonna chase that. So we're gonna really work on that, um.
Has your banking script been updated?
No, not yet.
Yes, it's a support.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
But that's, that's on there, and so there's multiple places they could put input. And from there, we took the information, got together as a committee, and started breaking that down. The committee came up with four categories on the responses from the community. One was anything related to west or mountain, because we could divide them in four sections of the government information. The second one was, of course, the, the community sent out Taylor and Hooper and different names like that with the city. We also had a category that had a lot of Haven in there, the, the word Haven, and the fourth was miscellaneous. From there, we took those names and the committee got to work, and they put all those names and broke them down and got twelve. The twelve names came from the miscellaneous category and Haven category. The committee felt like there's a lot of west out there already, and then there's a lot of mountain and west already related to that in that area. So they felt like we wanted to move away from that at this point, and really resonated with, uh, Haven in, in, uh, in the name. And a lot of that come down to the meaning of it, right? Safe Haven for kids, can't find a better place than that in elementary school. We want that to be that. And so Haven came out in the name due to the meaning of that, where it came from, and the location of the school as well. From there, the committee also looked at what's in the area, what makes sense geographically in that spot and that place. And one thing that kept coming back to the committee, um, was there's the bay out there, Ogden Bay. And as a result, as we surveyed and polled the committee, which we used a poll everywhere, where they came in and actually had a chance individually to respond to how they felt about the names and ordered them, uh, Haven Bay was the top in all of them. That was the name that the committee came up with, is Haven Bay for the first choice of the school. The other four that came in there that had Haven in the name as well, but it was Haven Springs. There used to be a spring on that property.
It still is.
Yeah.
Trying to train.
We tried to look it up with lots and lots of.
Lots of stuff. So Haven Springs is on there, Haven Point was on there, and those are the three top choices that rounded out, um, the name piece. There's a question about the name portion, and they'll give it to the mascot, you know, and they have their.
Oh, oh, so say.
Haven Springs, are Haven Springs and Haven Point?
But there were like six or seven that have, had Haven in and Haven Meadows, Spring, Haven Block.
That's not much of a meadow out there.
With Haven Swamp.
That was the discussion.
Mosquito Haven.
One of the, one of the members joked too, cause they said, well, Haven Point, I like the name, but what's the point?
Yeah.
Cause there's no, no.
Haven Block.
So those came out, it was very heavy on that though, with, with Haven in the name. Um, initially, on the top seven, there was Legacy in there, and there was a Tri Peaks, which you could see the three peaks on the east. So that was one that had come out.
And that for sure reached company.
But those, those went down the list as was surveyed and evaluated and had the committee give their input. It was important for the, for us to have a process where each member could give their insight. And doing it through a poll everywhere was nice because it gives immediate feedback and results, and it gives everybody a chance to say, you know what? I'm gonna rate this myself, and nobody else, no one wanted me even putting on this committee here, and it puts it together. So it gives a, it gives a spot for each member to really feel like they can put what they think.
So they like Haven, but not West.
Well, there's already a west in.
Well, there's West, there's also.
West Weaver.
Yeah.
I think it's a good choice, to be honest, other than the commissioner, I, no, I don't. Cause she says she didn't want it in her friggin Cindy, and now we're naming it after. I'll let it go eventually.
Eventually.
So you're right.
That's what came in with the name part.
What was it numbers, if you don't mind? Was it pretty heavy on, um, Haven Bay?
Well, poll everywhere doesn't, doesn't number them necessarily. It just ranks them based on the results on, gives them a number one ranking, a number two, a number three, a number four, and so on.
But there's not a, there's not a, uh.
Percentage?
You can't say.
No, a total, or a.
Forty percent.
There's not, that says here's this similar, we've seen fifty fifty, twenty, okay, but.
But he, but he has surveyed it several times, or polled it several times.
Okay.
And it's always come out number one.
So we're heavy on that, is what you're saying, when you say that, it's really, okay.
So like when we did the first poll, um, uh, we did the first one with twelve names on there as a committee. And so what they do on the poll is that they literally put them in order from their favorite to their least favorite, all twelve of them. And then from there, we moved the next meeting and said, okay, let's do this again. We're in a little down to seven, so we took seven of the top twelve, and said, we're gonna do the same process. And, and both times we did that with the committee, it was Haven Bay number one. The Springs and Point changed order on, on the one and the other. And, and I was planning to share that data with you on Wednesday, I can share it now too, I got it all on the presentation, but.
I don't know if they even need to.
Even that.
Is that okay? Okay, perfect. So that's where we are on the order that came in there, was, was, the, the Haven Bay was the number one on both polls with the committee, okay? Um, with the mascot, we did a similar process with the mascot with the committee, and pulling together the information. We started with the name first, then moved to the mascot. With the mascot, we looked and said, okay, what are the list of mascots from the community that we wanna look at? And from there, we did a similar process and came up with the ten names on there. Committee looked at.
That bird dogs mosquitoes.
It was number eleven though.
Off of ten, it was eleven, spin on it. Float and preyed had a big mosquito on it. Bigger than the tomato.
So we had the top ten names and did the similar process with the committee first, and rated those names on what their favorites were. They came down to, um, and looking at, let me give a backstory briefly on this with the mascot. The location of the building, um, as we know, is close to Ogden Bay, and also, the, uh, the theme in that building, as we look at the construction of the building, has a lot of, of waterfall theme because of the location of the building. They've done a lot of work with.
Bird refuge.
Bird, exactly, it's really close.
Built that into their design.
Well, and bay.
Yep.
Obviously, bird refuge.
There's a lot of theme with waterfall in there. So as we looked at that, one thing the committee wanna look at with mascots is we didn't, we wanted our own identity as a school and not take off, take from a, one that's already existing. We don't wanna take another mascot that's already there, which obviously cuts down on the, on the, on what we can do with that because of the ones that are already in existence there. And from there, we looked at and said, okay, what are some, some things that are really, what are some animals that are in that area that we could discuss as a committee, that we can bring in? And one of the names that came up in that, uh, discussion was herons. There's a lot of herons out there, there's several species in that area in the bay. And, uh, so that was one discussion piece that we brought in with the committee. Um, also looked at some other animals that came in through the commit, through the, through the community and committee that we could include in as potential mascots, as we talked to students and said, hey, what, what interests the students? Um, we did poll the students after we talked to the, to the committee and got ten names, and had the students in all three of those schools. Um, visited with K through two and then three through five. Let me tell you, that, that visit was two fold. One was mascot, but it was about excitement. And I tell you, I walked out of there with just an energy, and I was so excited about.
I don't, they wanna be in the school.
I've been missing that the last month. It just was just like, I've been doing interviews and everything else, and like, this is what it's about, and these kids were so excited. I showed them, rent drinks of the building, and and some were nervous about it, and then they walked out like, it's a mansion. And they were really excited about what's coming their way, and so that was, uh, that was a success story. And the, I will tell you, in the polling of the students, the number one the students selected was Huskies. Um, significantly, quite a bit higher than, than the herons. And so what that told us, as we look at that, it, it, with our polls, or what, as we go, if we go with herons, it's gonna take some education with students, um, of what that looks like. But we went back up, after the, after the polling of the students, herons was number one, or excuse me, Huskies was number one, herons was number two. And then, um, bears was number three. Those are the three that they liked the best.
I thought it was interesting though, can I, can I introduce?
Yeah, jump in, please do.
So, um, Larry Hadley, who I thought had a really good point, he said, if you give them a choice between chocolate and kumquat, what are they gonna choose? So if you say Huskies or herons, if they don't know herons, what are they gonna choose? So he said, it's an educational opportunity, not necessarily, we, we don't just go with what kids say just because, because they might not know.
And after meeting with the students and bringing it back to the committee, that's one discussion that we had, and look, we understand. And there was a little division, not major division, major conflict, but there's a little division on some felt one way and others felt another, but we ran through the process with that committee and said, okay, you know, this is what, we know this is what the students said ultimately. But we also know there's a lot of factors that the students aren't aware of, that we do need to bring in as a, as a committee, and look at and say, what makes the most sense with what we're gonna do there? Geographic location, here makes sense. And it's gonna take some work on our end in helping them understand and learn about it, but there are some really neat things we can do. And I think as they see the picture of where it comes in, as they get in that building and realize, wow, there's a lot of different bird and, and waterfall theme in that building. Um, it'll help with the congruency piece of what we're selecting.
Well, just really quick, I liked what, what's the base principle's name again?
Oh, the.
Buffalo ground. Cause when they talked about the ten E named, like, I wouldn't have thought buffalo, I thought kids would have picked something else. But I think a lot of that was, he talked about, he had like a story about, yeah, he had a story behind the buffalo, or bison. Are they the bison or the buffalo?
No.
Sorry, Mama, I don't really like the same thing. I don't know. Anyways, so I did like that, that was a big decision maker for the kids was being, you know, having a story behind, so I'm sure that would work in the long run.
How did you put that on your marquee?
Which part, the?
The herons.
Well, one thing.
I'm just thinking, if you're gonna build a marquee in front of the school, they put their mascots on that, you know what I mean?
It would do worse.
We have to do a fundraiser for the marquee. I'm just checking. Easy, you know, you put a heron on the side and it'll look bigger one.
I, I'm thinking more along the lines of when we do, I haven't finished all that part of the process yet, obviously, but mascot alone, more silhouette based, more of a.
Would you? Yeah, that makes sense.
It was silhouette.
Beautiful silhouette.
Yeah.
That makes sense, what's the colors?
I would do a whole big, and that's a great question too. Working with, one thing we talked to the committee, sent a message up to the committee as well, to look at and give some feedback on. We don't have the urgency, maybe like the junior high and high school does, cause we're not ordering cheerleading uniforms and football fields. And so, yeah, the colors need to come, but one of our big parts, you know.
Your PT's gonna wanna make sure.
I know. One of our big, big focuses right now is.
Let's room.
There are a lot of natural colors.
Yep, there is.
Sort of order.
Blues, blues, they're.
Yeah, there's blues and greens and tils.
Okay, tils work, and blues.
Yep, all those three. And really, the architecture package really looked at that as a, maybe this is where we are in, in Weber County. And they really looked at it heavily, and as much as I do love the Husky, I tell, I love that, it'd be fantastic, I love what they've done. But when you look at what fits in the congruency piece of that area, um, here was number one, the committee as well, came back and said, yeah, herons was the selection in.
I thought it was interesting, can I, one more time, just as I was sitting there. Um, there was a lot of discussion that I thought it was gonna be quite divisive. It wasn't, Huskies came way low after that conversation.
Well, you just say Ha- Haven Bay, um, herons, and you picture that out in the middle of that field right now, tell Legacy comes through.
Yeah, it was in Homer, Alaska.
That'd be perfect in Homer, Alaska.
Justin, can I share a thought? I, I've never searched before, don't just now. Wisdom, good judgment, self-reliance, creating balance, um, uh, and clever. So that's, that's the associated word with the, with the term heron when you search it.
And I'll, I'll bring those up on Wednesday too, which is a good point.
Awesome, that's cool. It fits that culture.
What we were doing there too, uh, in the building as we're coming out, I even see some of those, these words that we use.
Yep, absolutely.
Branding, what this looks like.
Sure.
I don't see a gigantic heron, that's just kind of a law.
We can get you one, there's somebody out there.
I think they should.
Throw on.
We're doing by a heron costume.
I think it's very, for a dad.
Don't get anybody in the eye with that, we.
I know. So we would do, uh, do some more sellout based on some of those things, and, um, really just decide how we would brand that, that at school. But no doubt about it, if that's ultimately what the board, um, moves forward next week, it would certainly take some education pieces. And as transparency to look at, it wasn't, it was a difference between the first two, I know it wasn't, but like you said, the kids know what Husky is, and and a lot of them, when they responded, cause I gave them a chance to make comments on the bottom, said, oh, I, I like dogs, or I have a, I have one, or you know, things like that, because they could relate to that at this point in their life.
Of course.
There you go. Look at all the words they go with it, and you've got, um, elegance, patience, wisdom, self-possession, transformation, fortune.
And the colors are in the school?
Yeah.
But it just makes sense for that, that part of the area, that's awesome. And the community buy-in? A little super big.
Can you do that?
I'm working on a hair dance, so.
How about you one day?
On YouTube, so.
I can't wait.
Yeah, we've been not doing that.
I bet you will.
I have some bad stuff out there with, uh, some embarrassing things I've done in dancing. I'm very good at it. Sam brings, I'm not a dancer, so we don't want that.
Herons be a light on their feet there, I don't know.
So that's where we are at this point. The other, the other names that we'll bring, uh, ones that will be, you did have, separate those names. You have Haven, like I said, Haven Springs, and you also have Haven Point, and the other mascots were the Bears, the Badgers. And then we did throw in the Huskies, even though it moved down with the, with the, uh, the committee.
Just to honor the students.
The honor students, it is one of those four that are on there, so, and the, it was about fifty-three percent of the students and eighteen on the herons, cause they don't know what they are. So it's a, it's a wide spread. It was number two, the heron plus, so.
As soon as they see that out in the field though, one with their dog next to them, they'll understand. You know what I mean? I got, I got, uh, Shorty.
Yeah.
Right next to me, but there's a, I didn't know that's what that was called. My school's that, you know what I mean? I like that.
Mary Jo suggested that we put them bronzing out on retention.
I'm trying to get the spring, retention on, all that extra cash we have to pay. Larry's always coming back, John, John.
I think Mary Jo's gonna let, um, donate that.
Well, the, we can have our high school kids build that for us.
That could be cool.
Back to the foundry.
That's a great idea.
I didn't realize there was a retention pond there until we walked the.
Actually, we were out there yesterday. It's a beautiful setting, it's gonna be a great spot.
When the frag mighties take over, everybody in the world is there.
We'll burn them off.
Do you have to vote on the colors, or you just said you're gonna wait, or?
That's what I was gonna ask the, the board, if you want me to bring back colors officially, uh, by the time we see if we can do that. Right now, it's gonna be something in the range of what's in that building, which, which is a blue or a til or a, um.
Is that something that we really have to?
If we had them ready to go, and they just got banned it, but I don't think we vote on just colors.
Is, is that correct?
Mountain View has teal in there.
Like blue and gray here.
So if you can stay.
Are colors official? Like, is that, or is that something that the school, I meant, even at the elementary?
I'll talk it out. And I'll look at some colors there too. Right now, I did some, see if you saw it yet or not.
I have, and I can open it now.
Oh, whatever, fix that, okay. I'll fix that today.
It's almost.
But I'm collecting some information from our committee as well, and saying, Heidi, here's a chance for you to give me an inside input. Just keep in mind, these are the, going with the red doesn't make any sense because this is the huge in the building. So I gave them a color sampling of what's gonna be in there that I got from the architect, from Larry gave that to me. And so we're looking at all of that now.
Maybe you just present that anyways, that information on Wednesday?
Yep.
It was interesting, um, there were some parents who said, if, if Huskies were not gonna be a choice, why didn't you give it to the kids? And in hindsight, that's a really good thing, but you don't know in hindsight.
Right.
You don't know hindsight until you've done it, so.
Right.
So, Justin was masterful at walking through that, and just, I think everybody felt good when they left meeting, they were small.
We did, we did a motion in the second, everybody voted, so, I mean, ultimately, even though, any community you do, you're gonna have some that likes it up there than others, you know.
Absolutely.
Does that elementary feed Mountain View?
And Rocky.
And Odo Field Rocky too.
That's Rocky there too, yeah.
But then Rocky comes over to, to Westfield though. So you have, I was just thinking, everybody likes their own colors, but at the same time, you have both of, both of those schools already there, so you know what I mean?
So you'd wanna avoid anything that's rocky or Mountain View.
Potentially, and in elementary school, is that a problem?
But then one becomes more franchised, I mean, they say, oh, it's all fine.
I think you're gonna find through the color scheme that the colors are gonna be right there.
There's a lot of.
We've got like, it's like a bluish green there that's beautiful, you got like a.
Like elementary colors are buffing it up. It's like the P T S.
There's multi colors on there. If you only need to show you, I got some color, if you only look at the color palette right now, you should.
It's just sent to me through email?
You, you can just do that.
There's seven hundred and twelve on there.
I have, that's, that's a big, I get a try harder today.
I have to check it out there. Just delete them all, just delete them all.
It's too red, it's orange, yellow, blue.
And that's throughout our school too, and that's a lot of colors, and they've really looked at, you know, what's, and there's some greens with the vegetation out there.
Yeah, black, blue, orange.
School, so.
So that's got everything that's in the school, if that were, I would think, til.
I will tell you, I've learned a lot more this last week about herons than I. I will tell you, I've learned a lot more this last week about herons than I have.
Right? Then you ever thought you would have to know about.
But I've been, it's been fascinating, what great hunters there, I didn't realize that, but they actually are very hunters.
So now we're gonna have that heron.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we gonna get a costume for?
Yeah, you wanna come visit?
I'm not gonna do it. Put Jan in the costume?
Yeah, on the day that Justin gets, I would do it.
In the costume, in the costume?
I've always tried to hide some previous, uh, dances I've done in the school, so.
Justin, well done, he's the right pick for this school community.
And he has been phenomenal with the community, with the, the process.
He's still great, I don't, I don't, he's, they're grieving, I think they're stupid.
You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of seagulls out there.
I know someone's wondering, you could be sparrows or robles.
Seagulls, let it be the.
Haven Bay seagulls.
Haven Bay seagull, Haven bagels.
Haven Bay bagels.
Haven bagels.
Bagels for sure.
I'll present them on Wednesday too.
He's been thinking about it, he's been thinking about it in the last twenty minutes.
Like the guy, the guy that was upset that we're the. He said, there's no longhorns out, only one guy out there.
I should be the visitor this morning.
But you know what? One of the guys on the committee said, I drive around here all the time and I see longhorns everywhere.
They are everywhere.
Who cares?
But then there's, even if there weren't very many, I, I wanted, I wanted to ask a guy, when's the last time you saw silver wolf roaming around the plains?
Yeah, or tiger.
Or a tiger.
Well, and even with you look at the land, like when they talk about the area and they talk about, you have these things aren't in there, and that's true, I don't think that's necessary usually. But with, with really the theme that's out there right now, going that direction, I think is really helpful, say, you know what? It's, it's been ruined, they could have, it just did something completely different that doesn't fit.
Yeah.
You know, you'd have to change a lot of things in there to kinda say, hey, let's make that fit, you know what I mean? That was the reason the committee ultimately.
He's, he's Sasquatch, isn't he?
Not quite. Yeah, there's a lot of, I even got some more on there, I'll show you another time, yeah, there's a lot of.
There was some conversations about, they chose something that wasn't really what the community said.
With the high school?
Yeah.
I did just like what I kept saying, I'm like, hey, let's rerail back here, cause really, high school students, we're doing.
Yeah, Justin was very quick to bring him back, let's start at the elementary.
And we're already.
We're done, so let's talk about high school.
Anyway.
Anything else for me, any questions or all I can answer?
No, just great work, thanks for being here, we sure appreciate it.
So, thank you. I wanted to be in the house, so.
Very good.
Hey.
Thank you, not much.
Appreciate it.
You're good.
Okay, I'll see you on Wednesday then.
Okay.
For what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, be safe.
Can you go golfing this afternoon?
My gosh, my kid's jumping at the bits so much, he's gonna try out for Fremont this fall for his first time.
Wow.
He, I just signed up today for a tournament coming up that he's gonna compete in and.
I think he's gonna go practice today, cause tomorrow's gonna be.
Well, he's already talking, I said, can we go hit balls tonight, and like.
It's gonna snow tomorrow.
Yeah. He's all sick about it, I said, you're gonna have Monday and Tuesday and Thursday, Friday next weekend night.
In the snow.
You'll be fine.
So.
Yeah, Bryce, I heard Bryce went to coach for more out there.
Brock?
What did I say?
Yeah, he's at Westmore.
Oh, no!
They hired actually Jordan Watson.
So it went from badge awards for me.
Jordan Watson.
Okay.
Yeah. And then go on, actually, I did get with her, so.
That's, that's.
Yeah, we're not going outside right now though, we're in the inside, so.
She understands that part.
Okay.
I just wanted, I knew you would.
Yeah, I.
You're the man. I'm there for you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, let me, let me tell a Paul Wilson story, can I?
Yeah.
There where that new elementary school is, I've got a, a, a journal entry, uh, from, uh, some of the early family that came in. In eighteen fifty-three, about a mile southwest of where that elementary is, the family was living in a wagon box, because they, there was, they hadn't had time to build a house, and they had some sheep and it was herding out there. And, uh, in the, in the journal, it specifically, it says specifically, uh, went out today and shot coyotes and wolves. Drew a, a difference between them, you know?
Wow.
It was just interesting, uh.
Were silver wolves?
I think they were silver wolves, and that's why there's not any at Fremont.
No, I take that back, there's three.
They shot them.
They're right in the middle commons area.
Wow, that's interesting.
Coyotes, coyotes and wolves.
And wolves.
Interesting.
Made, made a difference between the two of them.
What?
He also finally got a pair of leather boots and got them wet about a week after he got them and had to cut them off his feet, so he's.
He's shrunken, gone and dried out, he's shrunken.
Well, he is in the middle of the swamp out there.
Yeah.
Great journey.
Which they were.
Yes.
Wow, that's interesting, coyotes and wolves.
Coyotes and wolves.
Oh, well. Well, listen, I wanna get you all to your weekend, but I do need just a few minutes of your time, we do, or just to give you an update on where we're at and get your input and direction moving forward a little bit. Um, I have a couple of things in your folder for a takeaway, and, cause if your board needs you a little like relief later, you've got it. But these two documents are the two that we're gonna look at just real quick today. This one right here and this one that says the strategic plan outline, I've got it up there on the screen. Let me just share with you, we've come up with a name, um, for our strategic planning going forward. We're gonna, we're gonna go with, if you're okay with it, Elevate Twenty-Eight. And the reason for the Twenty-Eight, you can see that symbol right down here, this will be cleaned up. This is just a real blurry version of it right now, yeah. We'll clean up the colors, it's a little too busy right now. But Elevate Twenty-Eight's right here in the corner, what we're thinking is gonna be a four-year, really intensive plan. That's why the year Twenty-Eight, so it'll run from this coming school year, twenty-four, to the, the school year, end of the school year at twenty-eight, okay?
And then revise it after that?
Revise it after that, and go a little probably deeper and things like that, but can I just bear with me, let me read this, this gives you an idea of where we're headed. So I wanted to read this part, it's the top paragraph, it's right here, and we will make this a little smaller.
This is my packet, right?
This is yours, sorry, sir.
No, no.
Take it, no, I got it, I got everything I need.
Oh, there's one right there.
This, this is stuff I.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, here's an extra one, you take that one, I'll take this. But what we're envisioning is this, so Elevate Twenty-Eight is a visionary blueprint for Weaver School District, which aims to elevate both the educational environment and the individual demand. This comprehensive framework outlines targeted focal areas, priorities, goals, strategies, expectations, and measures of improvement over a four-year period. By integrating the concept of elevating, the plan emphasizes not only academic achievements, but also the holistic development of our students, educators, and the broader community. It seeks to create an enriched educational experience that fosters innovation, inclusivity, and excellence. The strategic plan guides the district in optimizing resources, fostering leadership development, and enhancing collaboration among stakeholders. This forward-thinking approach is designed to elevate the district to new heights, ensuring it becomes a catalyst of educational achievement and community engagement over the four-year horizon. So you can see, and we're, we're still playing with some of these, these statements and things, but that's the concept of Elevate, why we went with Elevate. And, and feel free as we walk through this all to give me some feedback, and Dave is taking notes, and so is Pam over there. What, what, what I asked you all to maybe come prepared for or with today is, could we have maybe a ten-minute discussion before we leave around these two questions? And let me tell you why. I would like to place it right here, actually, down here, of the board, a board imperative statement, or at least in the greater document. We would like every one of our employees to have a copy of a one-pager like this, so that they know what we're focused on and how, how we're gonna measure it, and the goals that we're seeking on the backside of it. But there will be about a twenty-page guiding document that goes into all the details, does that make sense? So I could either put a, a short statement from the board right here and in the document, or we can, we can create a, a little bit longer one, and I'm gonna give you an idea of what we mean by that. But we, we would love to have your input on, what are your hopes, aspirations, and dreams for the community? Uh, and for young people especially in the community? And then what skills and mindsets do young people need? If you look at this, I've got this in your packet, this is the twelve, the competencies around a portrait of a graduate. And according to USDE, twenty-twenty-one, we should have had these integrated into a, a plan. So we've gotta integrate them into our plan, and I think it's, that it's a worthwhile endeavor, because they are all the things that we're gonna build to build into our plan. If you wanna take a look at that and maybe build some, maybe a comment or two around, what, which ones do you think are most important as a board? That could be a guide, or if you wanna just maybe anecdotally give us some ideas, but can we just pause for a second? And then what I thought I would do then is show you where we're at right now in the, in the overall plan, just give you an outline of where we're at. So Dave's gonna take notes, um, I just wondered, any thoughts you wanna share around this? What we will do is come up with a few versions of a board statement, a vision statement that's coming from you, that we can embed into this plan. And we'll share it with you and have you give us, you know, a feedback on which one you'd like the best, does that make sense? So any thoughts about, you wanna share about these? Janice shared some things via email, you probably saw Janice's email that came to all of us. Um, and so I won't bring that into it right now unless you want me to, but any, anybody wanna share some thoughts?
So I did a vision.
Okay, perfect.
But it's a vision.
That's great.
And I tried to, I tried to include everybody, so, especially if we're gonna hang this up.
Yep, yeah.
You know what I mean? And so, I'll do that for you. Um, a community where our children feel loved, respected, and encouraged to develop to their fullest potential.
I love it.
Just be done, because realistically speaking, if we don't hear those, we can make the marks that we want them to hear. While I'm trying to do inclusive.
I love that.
Say, say it again, Julie.
Absolutely not.
Say it again.
Dave wrote it down, so we should be in good shape.
Got it.
Dave, could you say it again?
A community where all children feel loved, respected, and encouraged to develop to their full potential. See, I, I like that because it's, uh, uh, it's short.
Well, that was.
You know, and like the, the tech college, their little thing is one student at a time.
Yep.
And that's kinda where my head's been on this thing, is obviously we can't steal theirs.
Yeah.
But just something short like that, you know, uh, building lives one child at a time kinda thing, something like that, that's just a short.
Yeah.
Statement without going into, to long sentences and.
Well, that was my initial thought, especially, and I don't mean to be mean, but like this question that you said.
A tagline.
No, and that's not the vision statement, that's just an explanation.
No, but this is the nationalization, but what you said's gonna be supported by.
It's, ours is gonna be small.
It's gonna be supported by twelve pages of document.
Yeah.
Is there any way, if this is gonna be hung, is there any way we could cut that down to hit seminar what we're talking about? So somebody will actually stop and read it versus saying, it's too long for me to read, I'm leaving.
That could be in the, that could be in the bigger booklet.
You know, years ago, five or six years ago, the, the, the Weber Way thing was kinda brought up. And I like that, it's more of a tagline other than a long statement that people won't ever read all.
I don't, I won't.
You know?
That's true. We've gotta have a vision, as far as the outline goes, there's certain things we've gotta build in per, per the, uh, the legislative O L A G. They've given us an outline, we've gotta follow to put a strategic plan together. So for the district, we've gotta put a vision statement together, and a mission statement together, and we've gotta have core values. What I'm hoping the board's vision statement is, is just an overarching short statement, like you're saying, that embodies what you all feel is most important, does that make sense?
The only, the only thing I got of was incorporating resilience, cause I think that's huge right now. I think we're, a lot of parents aren't allowing their kids to be resilient.
Yep.
And that's huge for the future, and just, I like the lifelong learning or personal growth, but that could, but that goes along with full potential.
Yep, yep.
Let me, but I love the.
So this was another one I had, this was the other one I had.
Go ahead. Yeah.
You get, it kinda hit on some of that. Empowering all students to embrace learning, achieve their best personal, oh, sorry, achieve their personal best and build their emotional, social, and physical wellbeing. And I tried to capture all them on that same thought.
I like that.
So that was the other thought, and I, again, my whole thought was exactly what Paul was saying, trying to keep it as small as we could.
Tagline.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. I like, I love them both wonderful.
Yeah, I agree with that, like a slogan, something that they can remember, cause they won't remember a whole paragraph, but that needs to be on our mission statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a thorough support.
Exactly, and, and a board imperative, according to the definition I read on this, the, the outline they want us to put together, a board imperative is, is your seven-member boards, just, just what you feel is just foundational, what you, and then as a district, we've come up with a vision and mission statement for all the employees and for the, for the students, does that make sense? So let me give you an example, so, to clarify. So we've been working around vision and mission too, and I love what John shared, because it, it ties it all in, it ties it together. We've been thinking around these two statements right here, and I don't know which one, empowering future-ready learners and leaders, or empowering the leaders and learners of the future, something very simple. And then mission, this one's a little longer version of this, but I like this one for a mission. Nurturing the character, commitment, connection to the community needed to empower all learners as they achieve their fullest potential. And I'll explain why we put these four Cs in it, because these are the four core values that have come out of a lot of our data that we've been pulling and talking to people. They wanna see a group that's run from character-driven decisions. They wanna commit a group of people, leading their kids, this is coming from, and, and teachers and parents. Connections, they want their kids to feel connected to the, the school and the people in it, and then we board community engagement, which is what you've talked about, Kelly. So we, we've kinda been playing with those, but your board imperative, like John just put in place, would be more up in this area. We would put it right at the top of the, the, the document, does that make sense?
How about, what it said, reach your full potential, could we, and be successful, could, should we use the word success? That's always a good one.
See that there?
Yeah, they've all have a name right there now. We'll, we'll play with a few, if you're okay with that.
Future success or something about.
I, I don't know exactly the, the guidelines they're giving us that we, the, the things we have to fulfill, but.
I love something really short, cause when I go to a school, I ask him, what, what is the focus for this year? Yep. I, I've played with kids on it, and I have fizz cards in my pocket. Yep. And if they can tell me, uh, we've got, we see you, we've got you, and you belong, and we're writing them a fizz card right off the bat. And they come to know that. Yep. So I want something that the kids know is our focus to, and parents, whatever.
Wonder Bread helps build strong bodies.
Twelve ways.
Then they got Sue, they had to lower it to eight or something, something.
Primary children's, I've always loved, it's the third, the child first, but always.
Yeah.
And everybody knows that's primary children.
Just something like that, that's easy to grasp, but yet has meaning to it.
We'll play with it, if you're okay, and please shoot us some more ideas, we'll play with it and put them in front of you, but that would be part, either we put that right here, John, I just wanted to have some word.
No, I agree, no, no, no.
That fizz mark would be in the bigger booklet.
No, I agree.
But we'll put the board imperative right here, does that make sense? Okay. Now, real quick, while I got you, and I'm gonna let you out of here, I wanted to share just a couple things with you. We also have to identify focus areas and measurable goals, areas we're gonna focus on for the next four years. So as we've been looking at all the data in Weaver School District, and I'm not gonna take you through it all, I'm gonna provide some links for you. There's a couple of things. These are the targets for Utah State School Board, for the whole state. You can see that they want these percentages met by all school districts. So we're incorporating those into our conversations. You can see third grade literacy, they want sixty-five percent of kids at benchmark when they're in third grade.
Are we still below all this?
We are, and we are, yes, I'll show you where we're at real quick.
That's all academic.
Sixty-four percent in ELA proficiency. They want sixty-six in math and sixty-seven in science. Graduation rate, we're right there, we're right where they want us to be there. We're not quite there in having our students leave with, seventy-seven percent of them leaving with an ACT higher than eighteen.
Somebody said that's going away.
It could go away.
Or maybe emphasis.
A lot of people aren't requiring it anymore.
Yeah.
Maybe you just decided to go ACT optional again.
Yep, they are, they're probably gonna be changing this. But I wanted to show you real quick, just as a reminder, you guys, and then I won't, we won't go through a lot of this, because you've seen this already, but forgive me.
I didn't even know they had ACT scores in double figures.
Okay, so I want you to see, so this is 2023, and I'm gonna take you back a few slides to start. And this is where Janice speaks to a little bit, her concerns about our academic excellence, our focus on student outcomes and learning. So 2023 is over here. This is the state average right here, this red line. These are all the districts in the state. And not to be a downer, but for the, this, if we went back to about 2014, we're about in the same place for the last ten years. We haven't, we're in the bottom third around ELA proficiency. And you can see right here, this was last year, this is this year, we came up just two, two bit, two points. The good news is, between one year's time, here's our growth. We went above the state average on our growth. So we feel like we're already doing some things right now to get us moving in the right direction. But if I go back to this one, this to me is unacceptable for Weaver School District. We are far better than this. So we've got a plan around this sort of focal area that I'll speak to here in just a second. Let me show you math. Here's where we are this last year. Thirty-seven point five percent of our kids are proficient. Again, though, we're below the state average, and we're down in the bottom third-ish, right? Growth-wise, we made a huge jump this last year. So we're really excited about that. We're on the right track, in my opinion. Here's science, though. Science is one of the hardest ones for me, because we've really got a lot of work to do. But here's where we are over the last couple of years, and here's where we were last year, again, in the bottom third. And our growth wasn't where we needed it to be either the last little while. So we've got work to do in the core content areas, and we've got a plan in place that we've already started. But I wanted to show you those three and take you back to our priority areas real quick. So, we're gonna go... Shoot. I lost it, Dave. I gotta go back to my, take this paper right here, go to this paper right here for me. We'll go off of this right here. So, actually, I have it posted, let me just go back and find it. It'll be right here. Okay. So right here, what we've decided in terms of focal areas for our district, based on all the data and all the input we've had over the last year and a half, we've decided to make our number one focal area, and I, I don't know where it went. Dave, did you see where it went? It's right here. Academic excellence and innovation. So we want to get a focus back on this term right here. And we've got three priorities under that. If you guys feel confident that this is the right direction, we want to focus on future-ready learning. And that really ties in all the portrait of graduate competence.
What is future-ready learning?
It's another, Dave.
Like we're gonna ready...
It's ready, when they leave high school, they're gonna have these skills and competencies, okay?
Janice, can I ask you, when you say we gotta get back to that, where have we been? What have we been missing?
I believe we've been focused, and if, sometimes when you try to do everything, you can't do some things really, really well. And so we really want to feel like, we've tried to wrap so many supports around kids at Weaver School District. We've kept a place like this, it's been wonderful. But if we really want to bring academic excellence to the forefront, we're gonna have to do some things really strategically to focus on that. Does that make sense?
Do we have the resources in place to do that?
We're gonna have to make some decisions, John, that's...
And what I, I don't mean resources, I think your team has that.
Yep.
Do we have it in the field? Are we being supported by that?
We're gonna have to do some training around this, strategic planning around it, yeah.
And instructional coach piece is one of the very first components.
Yep, we got it.
I have been with Clyde attending instructional coach meetings all year, every single Friday. Superintendent had authorized those, actually, online. They took the place of, if you will, the reading specialists. And what's happening in those meetings is, those people that are, those instructional coaches are being trained to actually coach the delivery of academic excellence and curriculum as it relates to essential learning targets. So they're taking that back to their school. What is the most important part of this curriculum that will be assessed on the informational pieces that the state has set, is the heart of our core. And they're training those in their PLCs and their leadership teams. I'm sitting here as an old principal. If I had had access to that, I was trying really hard. But if I had access to that, I think you're gonna see, and I'm hoping, predicting-wise, I'm hoping that you'll see that that growth score at Weaver just continues to accelerate, because they're touching down in every single school.
So, and I agree, the only challenge that I would have, if you'll educate me, is recepting us on the teachers that's gonna be pushing this out.
So here's what's joyful about that.
You're on a nice piece there. We've been talking about that a lot, John.
No, here's what's joyful about that, is that the instructional coaches aren't coming with a dictatorial delivery. It is more of an instructional, they are not evaluating. They are coming with an instructional presence to say, if this is the most critical component of your curriculum, how are you delivering that, and how are you measuring it across time? Those pieces have always been out there, but the focus has not been quite so laser-like on their...
The other part, John, is, we've heard this acronym PLC, professional learning. We've been doing PLCs at Weaver School for a long time. This just narrows the focus on the essentials. What do our kids have to absolutely have? We're really trying to reorient our PLCs to get refocused on that, and try to get some energy going around it. We know that with teacher collective efficacy, if teachers are working together on behalf of kids, and they have the support to do so, they're going, they're gonna bring...
That's the key, because my question would be, I'm excited to kind of hear what you're gonna say, Jan. But the challenge, the reservation I'm holding, is the fact that they're saying they're bringing one more piece up to me again to change something. And they throw their hands up and go, "I can't, we're not gonna be successful if we don't get it where the core hits."
You're on it.
I'm so sorry, here's what's happy, is that it isn't new. They're not asking them to do something else, they're just focusing them intently on their core.
Yep, on their core, we're going deeper.
I think that's all critical. I think what I'm hearing from teachers is, if the only thing I gotta do is raise my test scores, I know how to do that.
Yep.
And I'm being taught to do that. And so we've got to be really careful to avoid that idea of...
Word development.
This is so competitive, that I've got to...
That's what I'm saying.
I've got to teach to only that, and now I'm not, now I've lost the focus of the whole child.
Yep, I agree, I agree.
I think taught's a good, kind word. What I presume to be saying is I'm told to do this, which just drops their level of ambition, based off of my own perception, which is reality telling gets changed. That says, "I'm gonna dig my heels in and I do that," when realistically speaking, if you're going to describe that in your learning this, that really, they've already been doing it. We're just going to change the way we roll it out, or they're thinking or something.
Can I add one more thought? I learned as a principal, a pretty joyful concept as the years went by. I never made it a contest for them, right? And I let them choose which area they would start on. And as they did, and as their scores began to change, something else happened in their lives inside our school. There was a job satisfaction that escalated through the roof.
Purpose and meaning went up.
They began to realize, "We're killing this, and no one's making us do it." And it is a, it is a natural grassroots growth, but somebody has to give them the torque to that back rear wheels.
And John, sometimes when we talk, and I get where you're coming from, but we're not necessarily talking about that twenty-year veteran teacher. We're talking about that brand-new teacher, who is just learning their skills and the trade. And that support and that input is critical.
That's the key I'm talking about, because you're not gonna take a Jodie Anne Dance and change her mindset off of a Dave Hells that's in the same, that's why I said it. Because you know what I'm talking about when we're talking this culture, when you're saying, "We want the collaborative things to happen within those cones or within those work groups." If you've got a Jodie Anne Dance that just says, "Go ahead and talk."
And you, but you can see what this could make a difference, because when, when those guys expire, and they exit, now you've got the new teacher that came up with that culture, getting that support, and that's where you're gonna see that.
So I like it, I like where we're going. I think we need to be above the red line. I looked at NIBO, some other stuff that we're below. I'm just saying, it looks really good from thirty thousand feet, if we can get exactly what you're saying.
I think the key is gonna be to use that with our coaches, that they are our coach. And I've played a little bit of sports, and I've watched a lot of people that I love play sports. And a coach that is harsh, and negative, and directive...
It doesn't work.
Never elevates.
It's not motivating, no, it's not motivating. But if I side-by-side with you, and I say, "This is what you're doing really well." So I think that's, the key piece is that coach piece.
I want to add one more thing. Here's the thing, I realized, I'm gonna speak to Val very specifically. I had a, I had a sea of veterans, and they were not performing where they knew that kids should be. What I never did was dictatorially ever ram anything down their throats. We grew as a school. We grew based on good principles and elements of teaching and learning that were also focused on the things that were actually essential to the child's understanding before they exited a grade. It took, you know, years, it didn't happen overnight. But what happened when I left, and I'm not saying this was me, I didn't do this. I never made it a contest between teachers, they worked as teams. They elevated, they found the best instructional practices, and they worked with those. They would share intergrade, and as those things began to take place, the whole school lifted. And then guess what happened? The people would come, the millionaires would come to tour the school, and they would say, "Why should I come here?" And I would say, "Well, we would never tell you that you have to pick us, because there's tons of other wonderful choices. But let me show you who we are, let me show you what we do." And as our scores started to rise, people rarely chose the other private schools, because they were like, "Why wouldn't we come here?" And I guess what I'm hoping, and what I'm feeling, is that there's an energy in this. If we never make it dictatorial, we never ram it down anyone's throat.
Can you roll that out that way, though? Because you're an exception to the rule, and we talked about you, we talked about you, we talked about you, just in these people that we know can elevate those things. That's not really the ones I'm worried about, because we have thirty-three hundred employees. How many are teachers? And how many are principals that's rolling it out that way? If that core value is excitement, energized, and growth...
I think pulling out that competition is gonna make...
Until the legislature passes, until they pass the two million...
Okay, sorry.
You're great, John, I love what you're saying, because what you're saying is, we've got to develop our instructional leaders to be able to do that, too.
That's our core, I would think so, otherwise we're never gonna be there.
Can I add one more tiny piece, and I'll stop talking?
Yeah, you're good.
Your amazing principals are also in a sequence right now where they're being taught too. Where they're learning how that delivery's gotta look.
We're kind of starting from that grassroots level again, I'm just reiterating some things, helping and helping fill more pockets. I did want to share this with you, though, this is gonna help too. Full-day kindergarten, can I just tell you, early learning? Look at this, look at this in one year's time. Percentage of kindergarten students who achieved typical or better growth in a K's literacy was this amount in twenty-one, twenty-two, and we're between here and just a couple of years' time. Percentage of kindergarten students who achieved typical or better growth in mathematics has increased from forty-eight to seventy-three. So we're seeing such better foundational skills coming out of our K through three, and through the full-day kindergarten. That's gonna be a game changer, in my opinion. So, we'll embed that.
Is it, tell me about Acadients, is that the test that they just, when do they take that?
Dave, when do they take Acadients in the kindergarten? It's in...
So it's fall and spring?
It's fall and spring, it's double, yeah. Okay, so when we flush this out, Will will share with you all the goals related to that. It's gonna be a K through twelve goal set. There will be a graduate, there will be a graduation-related goal, there'll be goals for, you know, the junior high and the elementary level. We're also gonna really bedelbe in and bring these two pieces in, because this is the most important foundational skill. So priority two, under academic excellence, will be literacy achievement. We're gonna, we're gonna just get a little bit more intensively focused on the science of reading, and how do we bring that in? And our coaches, our instructional coaches are key to that. We've also hired and reorganized curriculum in such a way that we have a doctorate, somebody with a doctorate of literacy in our curriculum ranks right now, who's gonna really help us move the needle here on that score. Mathematics, again, that ties into the critical thinking and problem-solving competency here on Portrait of a Graduate. So we felt like those three areas are gonna be foundational to helping us with priority area one, focus area one, okay? I had Janice say something in her email, I just want to put this out on the table. You know, we need to get back to book learning versus learning off a computer screen. She talked about how she's talked to some teachers.
Somebody, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Was that a neighbor?
It was a teacher, I think.
I think it was a teacher.
It was a teacher. We do have this, we've got to blend the technology into instruction a little bit better. Some of our teachers are putting all of their content on their Chromebook and saying, "Kids, go and pull up and learn that way." We've got to still find that balance. And so when we talk about innovation here, that's gonna be the piece of, how can we seamlessly bring in technology to support good instruction? We've got to, we've got to fix that balance, we're a little out of balance there.
Janice, I have to, I have to go back to my own experience, too. I cannot tell you one, one book that I remember from my elementary years, but I can tell you every teacher.
Yep, it's that connection, and you gotta get into that piece of...
So that's way more critical than the book learning, or the technology learning, or whatever.
Here comes the whole child stuff that John's talking about, and you're talking about Dan. So focus area two, we want to title that Safe and Healthy Schools. And we've got three priorities that are developing there. One of them is better community engagement partnerships involving parents, doing a better job of communicating what is going on at Weaver School District. We're gonna, we're gonna create a better website. We're putting together a video production, a graphic art team, that's gonna help us tell our story better and engage the community. I've been hearing feedback from several of you around this, Paul and I have talked about the website. That's one part of it. But the other part of it is, how do we make sure that our schools are welcoming and engaging with parents to a greater degree? And so we're fleshing out some strategies around that. We also, priority-wise, this gets to the relationship part, the whole child part. We would like to prioritize culture, caring, and safety. We, we right now know, our data shows that there's a disconnect right here in our secondary, especially around, students aren't perceiving their teachers care about them to the degree that we need them to. And partly that goes to, we believe that teachers are a little bit burned out. So we're, I'll get to that piece here in just a minute. So we're gonna focus on positive teacher relationships, belonging. We've got some work to do around prevention. And then this will be something I will engage with you, the board. We're looking at a district-wide cell phone policy that we know that we can get the focus back on learning during class time versus on cell phones. And that's part of a safe and healthy school, okay? Those are the things we're talking about there. Third priority, under Safe and Healthy Schools, is something, we're going gamebusters on right now already. Larry, Lane, the safety committee, you know, you're on that, John. We've got wonderful things going on there, but we've got to have a sense of security in our building before learning can happen. And so I want to flesh out those priority, or those goals, we'll bring them to you. You're gonna be shocked at how much headway is being made right now in this area. There's some great things going on there.
Doug's on that, too.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Capital improvement. I meet with the new, Matt Pennington next week.
Yep.
The new safety, school safety guru, Zawar. We're gonna go with him on the promotional side, so it'll be nice to do a little list, too.
Yeah, good. Third area, just for the sake of time. Third area, one of the things we have heard time and time again over the last year and a half, is I can't control the kids, they're not regulated, kids are not regulated in our classrooms. We're having classroom clears at the elementary level, we're burning people out because the behaviors are on the rise. One of the reasons is, is of COVID. We had, especially our littles, went three years without a structured, you know, setting. But it's also just the state of the, I think, of the community and the state of the society right now. We just have a lot of stress, families are under a lot of stress. We have got to put a system in place. We've lacked a system in our district, and so you've heard of PBIS.
What is that, positive behavior?
Positive and behavior intervention and support.
I think, I looked at that same thing Kelly would have, and on both of those, the most important word is positive.
And support, reinforce, reinforce.
It doesn't ever say, "This is how we're gonna diss in our kids."
No.
"This is how we're gonna..."
No.
Have you heard anything more about this bill that they're trying to pass about behaviors of parental...
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna...
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, we've heard about it as well.
Would the dress code have any place here?
Yes, yes, in fact, dress code, if you're really talking about safe and healthy schools, we probably can put that right up here underneath this, the Safe and Healthy Schools decade, where we talk about policies for sure. Let me add that as a, because that ties into behavior as well. I could go here as well, let me put it both places.
Janice, or, Janice, is there any other place? I like what you said, and it's hit me for the last couple of years, and that is discipline. We have no discipline in schools no more, and we are regulated, that's the sad part, or, we can't even discipline. Then how can we control a class? Can we get that back in?
If we focus on the positive, if we start there, with positive behavior systems does...
And they know that?
...the alternative systems of support does. If they start with that, and then come to the consequences, it will be much easier than if they start up here with the discipline or consequences.
I just never hear what you said there.
Yeah. John, if you're hearing that, there's a teacher perception that we just can't discipline kids anymore, and...
I hear that from peers, and I'm hearing that.
We hear it, and we're revamping our code of conduct, it's our discipline policy. What took the teeth out of it is certain things we couldn't refer to law enforcement, that more extreme side of it. What, what took the teeth out of it is certain things we couldn't refer to law enforcement, that, that, that more extreme side of it, for the more extreme behavior. That pendulum's coming back, and so we're reevaluating our discipline policy right now. So I appreciate, but that's been a common thing that's come up in our listening sessions.
And again, it's ten percent of your kids take ninety percent.
Eighty percent of your time, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Underneath, I'm almost got you here, Positive Behavioral Supports underneath this focal area, we've got to address this, friends. Twenty-four percent of our students, we pulled this up last Monday, twenty-four percent of our students are habitually absent. Meaning they're missing ten percent more of school, eighteen days or more of school a year. Out of a hundred and eighty days, they're missing ten percent or more.
You know, there's some, just little tiny things you can do that, too.
We've got to get back.
Will you help me with this, though, really quick? In Roy City, where we had, at the time that I was chief, seven elementary, two junior highs and a high school. Those seven elementaries at the time, only five were Title I. Now I understand all seven are Title I, which shows me we are going from that rate of a single parent income higher. So they're keeping the high school kids home, which you ran into, to babysit the kids while mom goes to work to try and make a living.
We're back to that.
Gina, can I talk to you, the Roy Cone Project? I don't know a principal that was more engaged with third grade attendance than the ones that sit in front of you. And, and she knew the system, she knew how to look at it.
But she started in Roy, and Roy's going the other way.
We're all going, they're all going the other way right now because of COVID.
Yeah, and also I see that simply because I could have applied that, but.
Yeah, yeah, but we've got, we, we're going to tighten this up, and I can tell you, our principals and our teachers are like, I cannot teach kids if they're not here. I can't, I've got to have them here.
It's a society problem, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Because Kathleen could tell you, she's, she's getting the new kids in school, she knew, her new class, new year. And she could tell by the time we had the first parent-teacher conference, she knew which kids had a broken, or used the term broken home or one parent. They had problems at home, she could tell by their behavior, and how, I don't know, how to change society.
It's all the terrorists right now, I know we can't, so we've just got to.
It's a challenge, isn't it?
The support in place.
She could tell, without exception, she knew when they came, which, like, a parent came home, so I'm working two jobs, and, you know, she, it was.
Gina, you just.
She knew that one hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, just this week, there was training for all of the school secondary, elementary, that was sequential PBIS, school-wide system training.
Here's how we get the framework put into every school. We're in the classroom, here are the expectations, here's, we're going to set that reset, we're going to do a reset district-wide on just how do we behave at school? And we're going to try to reinforce that and make sure we have positive reinforcements in it as well. But we haven't had a, a real systematic way of addressing behavior, and that, that's the goal. And that's going to take us two to three years to get that in, in place.
You know, when, when you talk about it, Language Arts Literacy, Math Literacy, Behavior Literacy.
It's true.
To me, they should be all side by side.
Yeah, we're having to teach behaviors that should be being taught at home, we really are, as part of the system.
But it's all part of literacy, or civility, or whatever you want to call it.
Would the, the risk sound like an old timer, but the best behavior change that I experienced, Malau, their football coach had a great big long paddle. Holds in it, called, he put on the, the Board of Education. I got hit once, I made an immediate decision to change my behavior immediately.
I know.
He was, to this day, when we get together, when we get together reunions, he was our legend, our mentor, Coach Dawson. I mean, he, we revered him.
I went to Pol Kilimetry, and the Principal Alstead had that same thing behind his chair. I never got hit, so I learned younger than you.
Yeah, but even more than that.
Yeah, he, you were ahead of me, it took me once, some kids took more than that.
I mean, my, my dad had one in the kitchen, yeah.
And the problem, now you get sued.
It started at home.
It's getting sued.
But I, unfortunately, we have so many kids now, like, who have learning issues, they've got, like, emotional issues. Emotional issues, things like, I have a friend who has adopted kids that were fetal alcohol, you know what I mean? You have all the, or they've got, what's the word, like, they've been diagnosed clinically with personality defiant disorder. You've got, you know what I mean, those are just like.
Intention deficit disorder.
Right, and so all of those things, it's like.
They go, these disorders.
You've got a lot of kids who are coming into school with already, like, three strikes, five strikes against them, and then maybe, and then maybe their, yeah, maybe their home life isn't good, and so it's, it's that that we're dealing with in, in huge numbers.
We are, we are, and, and our teachers, and our people can't expect, we can't make them feel like they have to carry the entire load. But we have to make them feel like there are certain things they can do to change and change them.
But I just think that's what makes today's classrooms a lot more difficult than just the threat of being paddled. Because a lot of these kids are like, sure, paddle me, I'll paddle you back.
I know, they will, and they'll say it, too, right, too.
I heard one today on a recording.
Little, little, too.
No, I'm sure.
But anyway, around the Positive Behavior Support, you can see a system, attendance, trying to, we've got to do some outreach. We already know some things that work there that we need to get back to. This piece is huge, and it ties into, we've just got teachers and kids that are not regulated emotionally right now. So we're trying to figure out some things that we can intentionally build into every class period instructionally, where we're teaching kids how to regulate. And, and that's going to be, we're still developing that, I'll bring the, the bigger plan to you later. But we felt like these would be the three best areas to focus if we're going to get behavior under control in our, in our district, okay?
So are those things that we go through, I mean, are we, as we talk about a kid in, in our, what, PLCs?
Yep, absolutely.
Should we go through those and say, where's their emotional regulation, where's their intent?
Yeah, what we're doing is we, this is what we've been training on all this year, is we were going to have an academically, kind of an academically-based team established at each school. It is time that we have a behaviorally-based team in our school. And it's been a lot, we've needed that for a while. This team will be in charge of that system and addressing and having a PLC-like discussion and, and supports around kids with behavior, just like we do academically with kids that are struggling with behaviors, does that make sense?
Does that sound like a broken record, but dress code comes in.
Oh, it does.
How to dress, to learn, or they dress, they're going to be go party.
You carry yourself a different way, you, I think that's a great, I, I added that, I'll bring that in. But we will have, so you know, we're not just going to put these on a paper and it says priority. Underneath each one, there will be goals that are measurable. There are going to be strategies of how we're going to do it, and then how we're going to measure progress over time, so we're.
And who is responsible?
And who's responsible?
Who's going to?
That's all part of it, yep. It'll, it'll be, what's the district level's response, expectation? What's the school leader's expectation, and what's the classroom teacher's expectation or support staff, right? And so we, we're breaking those down. If I showed you my document right now, that this is just a framework of, I send you all under the table. It's about forty pages long with all of these details that we're bringing, trying to bring together right now. Last area, and I'll let you get out of here, we've got to do something to help our employees specifically. And so we, we focused this last area on talent, our talent. We're going to, we're going to refer to him in the most positive light, they're our talent, these are our people that are in front of our children. And so how do we engage them better? How do we get them reminded about the purpose and meaning of their jobs? And then how do we continue to develop them and get them the skills where they feel confident to handle the issues they're dealing with? So the first one is, we've got to have highly effective people, and this has been a, a big focus in our district for a long time. We have some good things happening here. We're recruiting and retaining, and with Quinn, Carl Lindsay, being singled out a little bit with his skillset, we're seeing some huge gains around recruitment and retention right now. Quinn's going to do a really nice job for us, beefing that up a little bit. We're going to develop our talent.
Are we still the highest in the state for retainment?
We're probably in the top, I don't know that we're highest.
It seemed like we, if we wasn't right at the top, we just.
I think we've held that, held that ground, I think we've held that ground. But the behaviors right now that we're talking about, Paul, are driving some of our people out. And so I think we've had a dip, I think we've had a dip. Developing our talent, one of the things we've heard from our teachers over and over again is we must have time to do the things you're asking us to do. So we're looking at providing, trying to figure out the structure of the building at time. And then having a, a professional development plan for our teachers and our employees, every employee group, administrators, teachers, classified, where they know we're training, doing training this year, and it's, and it's tied to what we're trying to get accomplished here. Does that make sense? So that's one thing we're, we're working on right now, is that piece. And then lastly, how do we best support our teachers emotionally, just wellness?
Have you thought anything more about those, that breakout session from USBA with that, what school and district was it, Logan?
It was Logan, uh-huh. We are, that's part of this discussion, absolutely.
It, they just seem to have, like, really positive results for seemingly little effort, just.
Yep, yep, absolutely, and if you guys remember, I'll, I'll put this here for right now, I put this here just to remind you, but we went out RFP, one of the things our teachers are saying is, I can't even take a break because I can't find a substitute. So we're putting some strategic pieces in around how can we help them be well? How could we help them rest? How could we help them with the burnout? That's one area that we're looking at right now, but the other one is just.
Does that start at the top, Gina?
Yeah, that will be coming, that's something we, yeah.
She never stops, no.
I want to start.
She didn't even get it, she knew.
No, she totally didn't.
Right over the top.
Jeff, you just derailed my whole presentation. No, but you're right, we, we've just got to focus on this district-wide. But our, our, right now, our teachers have told us that we can't, we cannot even create a lesson plan to hand to somebody because I don't trust that I'm going to have the class covered for me.
Do we have that service in place yet?
No, we're looking at it right now.
I thought we approved that in board meeting.
You approved the RFP process to start.
Oh, stomach.
Yeah.
I think they're, are they going to be?
We're probably looking at April, we're probably looking at April.
Because I think the other one's coming in March.
Do we still have that quiet place down at Wick?
And we have, we've kind of.
Do we have a place you can sign out and they can go down on?
Well.
Because I went in there, she said I fell asleep, I couldn't get out. I had nothing to do with sleep, it's.
Yeah, but those, those spaces, John, that you're talking about, every school's trying to build those in for our teacher, yeah. But it, it's just this, how do we support our teachers to a higher degree? So you're looking, if you look at these four areas times three priorities, we would, if we really get down to brass tacks, we're looking at twelve full flares over four years. I haven't shown you the goals yet, I want to be able to show you so you can see exactly what we're going to do to get to these things. But we're going to develop that over the next month.
Probably had less employees freaking out about the microwaves and refrigerators.
Yes, we're, we're, we're working through that, absolutely, absolutely. And that didn't help, right? That didn't help that we had to do that, yeah.
Refer to John Rich.
Bring it on.
It's, it's okay, we're getting there.
You wait to push your, care and get all that major.
But what you guys will see are next are a bunch of these underneath each priority. So here's an example of a SMART goal. So for example, under future-ready students, at least seventy percent of graduated students will have earned at least one credit and at least one AP or concurrent enrollment course. That's how specific we have to be around setting our goals in these areas, so we can measure them. So that's what you'll see in, in, that's in development right now, okay? And then how we will accomplish that are, will be the strategies we employ. So these things are coming right now, these are the things that we're working on right now. SMART goals for every priority, the strategies we'll employ to accomplish them. Well, Jan, here's your piece, what are the expectations for all of our groups? And then how we're going to measure each goal. And that is what's going to take a month to do.
That AP, you can turn it on and, I don't know, yeah.
This is just an example of a SMART goal, yeah.
What about a, like, a career competency as opposed to, those are both?
That's just, just an example of a SMART goal, yeah, that's not the goal, yeah.
It's just, it sounds like, I don't know.
It might be the AP teacher's goal.
It could be, yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Uh-oh, okay, we're done, we're done, let me have other questions.
I just didn't want to get in trouble.
May I do a two-second kindergarten share?
Sure, please.
Just came from Sherry Hyder, this is glorious and right. This is kindergartners who showed typical to better, typical or better growth. They, they went from, this was beginning of year to middle of year.
We're talking full year to half year?
No, beginning to middle, and then go middle, and so far, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, they were fifty-eight percent. Twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty percent this year. Seventy-five percent of the children showed typical to better growth. And then in your math, that was English, Language Arts, in your math, you went from forty-eight the first year, fifty the next, to seventy-three this year.
We're making.
So, Dave, can I ask a quick question?
I assume we don't have to answer right? The systems we've been working on are, we're, we're starting to work already, we're just going to keep there.
How many students do we have in half-day, just so we know?
Yeah, that's where I got yelled at by the superintendent, Davis.
I can tell, we're, so Mary Jo and the other, going into this study session Wednesday and sharing all the kindergarten data with you. Yeah, you're going to hear all the.
We still have our, you don't have the ton in half-day still?
We have a few.
Just one.
Okay, just.
Just to kind of comment in summary, what I'm talking, what Dave was talking about. Is if we get the teachers on board so that buy-in, so that they're involved with the goal-setting process. So if they're on board, in this business and just the general rule of human, if it's, they believe in it, and they're on board, they'll do everything they can to meet that goal, but if they don't like it, it's just pushed down on them or forced down on them. They'll fight, do everything they can to make it not work, send it to, and I told you so, that's just human nature.
You're speaking to the, the next piece where, once we get the framework done and the kind of the plan, then we're going to bring in focus groups. And it'll be a draft, this is a draft, teacher, give us your opinion, and we'll have some representation. We won't be able to get in front of every teacher and every employee, but we'll pick some representation. We'll have a parent focus group as well. That's why I'd like to get this ready to go in a draft form by April fifteenth, so we have a little time to do that.
So you drafted by April fifteen, and then focus group.
And one last comment, really, that as a kid, I might have been clueless as a teenager, but I knew absolutely which teachers cared about you. And were, loved what they're doing, and you worked hard for them and got them on board, versus you knew the ones that were just going through the motions, you just.
Exactly.
You kind of tuned them out.
Exactly.
That's the key.
Yeah, yeah, and then John has said this, and you said it, that I, when, in the fall, what we'd really like to do as a, as district leadership team is divide and conquer a little bit, we'd like to go out after we've gotten the input, we've had this approved, we'd like to go out and sit with each faculty, and we'd like to present the why behind it all and the rollout. We, here's the rollout, here's the why, here's what we're trying to accomplish as a team, as a district-wide team for kids and for each other. And we'd like to do a presentation in all fifty-two of our schools.
I think that'd be powerful, because some of what I hear is we don't see them.
Yeah.
We hear their message, but then it gets, it's kind of like me telling Doug something, by the time it gets back to me, it's wrong. Is that message doesn't get down.
Visibility.
And I really think the intent is extremely strong right here, I really do.
It's just get it to the.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if we can support that and side by side with you, that would also be the law.
We have many times to have board members be a part of some of those presentations, we would love that, we'd love any of you to be involved. But before, we've just got such a heavy lift because we, we haven't had a strategic plan in place for a while, and so it's hard to really narrow our focus in, and, and, and we, we were coming at teachers with a plan at a time that they're very tired, they're very.
So can I ask an ignorant question?
No.
You said there's twelve on there.
Yeah.
Is that too many?
Well, and that's a good point, if, if there's too many.
Is that, is that, I'm just asking the team that puts that together, is that too many to put together, roll out by April fifteen? Which not only does what she just mentioned, are you looking in the mirror and saying, I'm taking time off? That burns.
We'll, we'll, we'll roll it out with Paul, but most districts go four focal areas or three. We could go three times three, and then you're still at nine.
Across four years.
Across four years.
But I like what Dave said, too, is he said, I gave my teachers some autonomy and said, how, you know, what is your part in this one? How do you want to?
So they buy into it, so they, they're behind it, they're working to success.
So it's not a directive, it's not an, an.
That was my whole thinking, is there, is twelve too many to get the support to roll out?
That's a good point.
Or we cut it back to nine and say, we do this in two and a half years and roll the other out in two and a half?
We could take it down to keep more priority areas and take it down to two priority, two priority.
I'm always suggesting, it's, I'm not putting the plan together.
I say keep your four there, but prioritize them and see.
Prioritize when you go to study, listening sessions or whatever.
Yeah.
Either four, cut them down maybe, or what, instead of doing twelve, because each one has to be within it?
We're open to any and all suggestions that way, we just feel like we have a pretty good handle on, these are the areas that are going to move the needle event across four years, they really are, and it's comprehensive, this is whole child.
It, it can be done, I saw it done.
It would, I don't, whichever district did their strategy. It would, I don't, whichever district showed, did their strategic plan at USBA, I think they had five core values. So I mean, it's just looking at it different.
They have to fill the support, which I believe that this amazing leader is really good at. She brings, she brings the, hey, we're going to this place, we'll get there this way, but the support that actually comes to help you get there is in place, and you don't have to do it all by April fifteen. This is a four-year journey.
Bingo, you hit it. You hit it.
And John, part of the issue too has been, the first year and a half, we've done, had to do some prioritization to even get a foundation to support this.
Sure, sure.
So there's a little bit of that out there right now, like, oh, you know.
But I think your.
I think they'll see, when it comes together, they'll see, oh, that makes sense, why you restructured that part, or why you did that.
I think your peoples are seeing that already, Gina. I, I really strongly believe that.
We're not just making changes to make changes, we're trying to get the right supports in place to actually do something like this.
Well, those seats on the bus, and then those seats on the bus need to be delegated, portions of it, so that you all come back together and make it happen. That's that overwhelming sense, you know, that we, we talked about before.
Yeah.
Is, if, that's why I'm saying, if it's manageable, do it. If it's not, you need to chop it up because of what you have there.
But I like, I, I'll bring that into our discussions. Should we, should we streamline it? We can, where we started to now is that streamlined was.
Yes, yes.
We can streamline it again.
I'm just, it's only a suggestion, I don't.
That's, you're talking three, twelve focal areas with a couple of goals underneath each one.
That, to me, is a lot. If I'm trying to run that and tell my department or my crew, let's go and make this happen.
Great feedback.
At the same time, you say, I got great people to surround.
Yeah, if you promoted the fours.
And somehow, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna do that because somebody else is doing that.
Yeah, well, and some of it is, everybody's already doing parts of all of this.
Yeah.
It's not like we're bringing something brand new. I, I'm gonna tell you right now, there are.
Well, like the safety, that's not something teachers necessarily, well, that physical safety.
Yes.
So like, I'm already gonna think, I, I'm not gonna worry about, you know, the, the vestibules and the.
The building security, that's not something.
This, this was a department.
I'm very happy.
Yeah.
Give it to Larry Cody.
Yeah, yeah.
Let him handle it.
Yeah, there, there are some pieces at certain departments. I mean, this will also help our departments and us align our resources in a better way so that we're putting them towards the things that we're focused on.
Well, and I think it will build a collaborative sense too, if they say, hey, don't worry about this, I got it. This is what I'm doing.
There you go.
And don't, you don't have to worry about it. If you wanna ask me about it, that's great, but don't, you don't put that on your plate of worry.
It's those people on the bus, if you've got them in the right seats to make that happen.
Yeah, you're right.
And it sounds like you're close.
We'll bring, we'll bring it back to the, to the groups and see what they think. But that, that's where we're at as of right now. This is again, a, a result of a lot of listening sessions. We did the survey with parents and employees on the portrait of graduate competencies, those are built in. Um, so we're trying to, to listen and rebuild the parts in that they feel they need support in. Um, but again, a teacher's gonna have to be a part of helping kids come to school. What will be their part, what could be their part, you know? The, the principals, the administration's gonna have probably the heavier lift there, right? We'll work those all down.
I think you're gonna get, you know, bring them to school, as Jan mentioned that. And I think, sort of, John is building a relationship where they wanna come to school.
Yeah.
You know, we.
The teacher, the relationship piece right now.
You can't run them all, but you can, you can build a relationship where kids will wanna be in your class, they wanna be in your school.
Yeah.
And that's something that, I think, we gotta do better at.
Can I tell you, I heard someone explain today that was so powerful on this score. We have kids walking into our schools, too many, that have been up all night with a dopamine high on gaming. They come in, and we tell them to put their cell phones away, focus on learning, and they go, they just, they can't regulate. They, they, they're addicted to this. This right here is one of our biggest challenges.
Yeah, that's an imagine.
And then if they can't, we tell them to put this away, then they go to here.
Yeah.
And we've gotta figure out a better way to use this instructionally. Our technology focus in the district has been wonderful. We, I mean, it saved us during COVID, but our kids have got too much of this in front of them right now.
My, my grandkids heard that one. Do, do we have that locked down still? I mean, I remember when we broke them out.
Were you fucking YouTube or?
No, probably just most, majority of everything.
It is, they're very locked tight.
I don't remember who was, what's that guy's name? He's got that funny last name, anyway. After the DTS, they locked it down, so the kids.
Well, the teachers are now, they've got the block fee too.
Cut it.
Even though my daughter has an issue.
Anyway, anyway, he keep told us that this isn't going down.
Could she?
That's something like that, I was thinking that same thing. What's his name, Alex?
Alex.
Alec Kishko.
Alex Kishko.